Excuse me.
As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First in Jesus's name, I pray, amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments, sir.
All right. No adjustments to the agenda, then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is going to be our customer service appreciation day proclamation, and I would like to read this town of Clayton proclamation on customer service day, and then I would like to offer the floor to our customer service team, and then I'd like to meet you down front for a picture. All right. Town of Clayton proclamation, customer service day. Whereas customer service day is a celebration that recognizes and appreciates the hard work of those in customer service roles, and whereas it's a way to show appreciation for the individuals who go out of their way to ensure customers have a positive experience, and whereas excellent customer service can help strengthen relationships with current customers as well as attract potential new ones. By showing how much you value your customers through providing exceptional support, you can build higher levels of trust and loyalty between them and the organization, and whereas having great customer service means incorporating all departments into the process from sales to product development to operations, and whereas this collaboration allows for more effective communication internally by creating smoother processes resulting in better and faster resolutions of matters related to customers. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I Mayor McLeod proclaim Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four as customer service day proclaimed this sixteenth day of January two thousand and twenty-four, and I would ask our wonderful customer service team to please join me down front for a photograph, and let's have a nice round of applause for our customer service team.
Yeah, come on this side so I don't have to get the screen in it.
So, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for this recognition. I have an incredible staff, and I'm blessed to work for the town of Clayton, and we know that we have the support of you and the executive team every day, so thank you for everything, and I want to just thank all my staff, the ones that couldn't be here too tonight, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank all of you. All right. Up next is going to be life-saving awards, and I will give the floor to Police Chief Greg Dart.
I'm here tonight to present our life-saving award, our departmental life-saving award. I've been before the council before and presented a couple of these in the past. This incident that we felt like qualified for this, and I'll tell you a little bit about it in a few minutes, but we have a process in place for these awards where the supervisor or someone in the department can nominate one of our officers. It is embedded through our command staff, and then ultimately either approve or disapprove of it, but I believe this incident qualifies for it. This is Officer Ashton Anderson and Officer Edward Pistola on Sunday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at approximately five fifteen P. M. while waiting to check off the end of his shift, Officer Anderson was in the area of Highway forty-two east near fire station number two. He heard what sounded like a vehicle crash nearby his location. He advised Johnston County nine-one-one of what he heard and began trying to locate the accident. He subsequently located a single-vehicle accident where a two thousand and thirteen BMW had struck a light pole on Highway forty-two east near Front Street. Officer Anderson called for additional assistance from the police department, Clayton Fire, and Johnston County EMS, advising that the vehicle that he had come upon was on fire. Officer Anderson retrieved his fire extinguisher from his patrol vehicle and was able to temporarily disperse the flames enough to check on the occupant of the vehicle. After cutting away the airbag, Officer Anderson found the occupant or the driver of the vehicle to be unconscious and slumped over the center console. Officer Pistola, who was coming on duty, responded to the scene to assist Officer Anderson. Once they got the flames dispersed enough, they began trying to assess the driver's injuries. The inside of the vehicle had already began to fill with smoke and flames could be seen coming through the dash area of the vehicle. The decision was made among the two of them that they could no longer safely wait for EMS to arrive, and due to the immediate fire and smoke that was filling up the vehicle, they decided to remove the driver. Officer Anderson and Officer Pistola grabbed the driver under his arms and pulled him out of the vehicle to safety until fire and EMS arrived on the scene. These selfless and decisive actions of Officer Anderson and Officer Pistola saved the driver of this vehicle from a potentially life-threatening event. For their heroic actions and dedicated performance to the Clayton Police Department and to the town of Clayton, I am honored and proud to present both of you the Clayton Police Department's Life Saving Award and ribbon. I will note that this is Officer Anderson's second life-saving award since I first hired him, and I have joked with him that we're going to buy him a Superman cape so to his uniform, and he's got to start wearing it, so.
Town of Clayton, Clayton Police Department, Life Saving Award. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all of our law enforcement for the excellent job all of y'all do every day for the town of Clayton and our citizens. Thank you. Yes. Up next on our agenda are a series of public hearings. The first public hearing is a public hearing for the annexation petition two thousand and twenty-three dash one hundred dash ANX Pool Farm LLC.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
With respect to item A and B under the public hearings, I understand that the applicant does not want to be annexed unless the conditional zoning, which is item G, is also approved. So, something of a conundrum because you don't have authority to approve item G unless you approve items A and B, so that the property is annexed and subject to zoning jurisdiction. So my suggestion would be you have the public hearing for A and then defer the vote on A, have the public hearing for B and defer the vote on B until after you've had the public hearing for G and decide which way you're going to go with G, then you could come back to A and B and vote.
All right, thank you. That's clear. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This petition here is, the applicant is requesting to annex seventy-three point nine-one acres of non-contiguous real property into the town Clayton limits. This petition is one of two being presented today that has associated also with a future item further along in your agenda today, the two thousand and twenty-two one ninety-five conditional zoning with master plan for Vincent Road and conditional zoning, as Jen just pointed out here. Like I said, it's outside of our town limits and our ETJ. It's located across from Windsor Green Estates near Hidden Valley and not far from Glen Laurel East as well. Here you can see on the map, we provided a little arrow there. It's just outside of all of our borders and jurisdictions there along the Neuse River. Here is an aerial map of one of the two parcels. The parcel for the Pool Farm LLC is the one with the large star on it, so we can distinguish from them, and again, you can see it's right there adjacent to Hidden Valley Road. Here again, we're just showing that on the top area there, we have images of our future land use map kind of showing, again, this is outside the jurisdiction, and then this will come up later. Again, below you have the envisioned Johnson County future land use map, and you can kind of see it right here, this section here for you, just along the Neuse River again. And then this is a public hearing. The applicant is here to speak. If you have any questions, then about the annexation, staff can answer questions as well, and since this is a public comment, there may be people in this audience who wish to be comment as well.
All right. Questions or comments for staff? All right, being done, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to less than three minutes.
Now, we understand we're going to do all three of these, A, B, and G, sort of simultaneously. Okay, so we won't have the other.
No, I think they're being held separately.
They are being held individually. The vote will be delayed on six A and six B until the final outcome of six G is determined, at which time they will go back and take any action they choose regarding six A and B.
Okay, so G will go first, really. I mean, it will be, we will know where we were going on G before we do A and B.
We will know the outcome of A and B when we finish with G.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you do this quickly? This, these are two tracts of the old Vincent estate, and were at that time, you can see a larger map of it here, it's along, surrounded by some subdivisions of, there's ninety-three. There's Hidden Valley sort of next to it, which is a nineteen eighty-six subdivision. These are much older subdivisions as Wilson Mills, the city of Wilson Mills has moved up from the south, and Clayton has moved a little less aggressively to our west, and obviously Flowers is substantially is to the east, but moving into this area. What we're asking to do is to put this development in and a plan that has been well-planned for the town of Clayton. The developer has been to one clown, planning meeting, asked to table the meeting so we could meet with people in addition to the ones we'd already met with and try to address the concerns, and had a second planning meeting, which the planning board approved it, so we've had both of those. We have changed some of the zoning to make it less dense to accommodate that. We also have a few townhomes to help pave for the amenities and what is part of the development, and those townhomes are located in the center of the development, as will be shown, so we'll be able to basically go in and have all the edge of the development is going to be nice residential housing without the density of the townhouses. The only objection to the planning board meeting was, I think, a member objected to the townhouses. We're going to have, if you will, our first speaker, who is a planner, Pamela Porter, will present the details of our application, which, my name is Bob Spence, I'm an attorney from Smithfield, and I represent the developer in this application. Thank you.
Any questions?
Not to the guitars.
Yeah, this is just only an annexation. I'm probably getting too fast to go into you.
So.
Yep, this is just pertaining to the annexation of that parcel of property.
The annexation requirements are met, I think, and they are in your agenda and have been all presented. It's a conditional annexation, which obviously requires consensus, has about five characteristics that have to be met, and those standards have been met. Thank you, and we are actually, you know, just, we are one of the Vincent, I think it was Turner Vincent tracks off, where we'd be almost contiguous to the town of Clayton.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? You have to come to the microphone, identify your name for the record. Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? You have to come to the microphone, identify your name for the record, and ask a question.
My name is Gary Ogil, 2101 Hidden Valley Drive. The part that I would like to speak on is sort of the entire project, A, B, and G.
We are only entertaining anything that pertains to.
Will I be allowed to speak after G?
Yes, all of these are public hearings.
Thank you.
Yeah, but right now, just for clarity, we're just discussing the annexation. That's it. But you will have opportunity, yes, sir, without question. All right, anyone else?
My name's James Wolfgang. I live in 1635 Vincent Road, right across the street from the little pond there. I was ill last, for the last meeting, so I didn't get to speak. So being the attorney brought up past business, I would like to also, I would like to address the whole panel here. They were saying about old laws, 1982 and what have you, that, oh, this isn't any good, we got to move on. Well, we have laws of our country that are outdated well over 250 years, and they're still good, and they were wrote for a reason, and that reason is in your laws, to maintain a smaller, livable community without turning it into a big city. It's up to you people to decide whether you're going to swipe that pen and right away that the reason that they made those laws, or rather, you're going to accept it. I didn't have a dog in the fight until they insulted me last week. I was a move-in. I moved here 25 years ago because I like this town, I like what's here, I like the country out there where I went. I understood that it might change, and I still do, but I want you to understand also that because the law was wrote in 1982 doesn't make it a bad law. It maintains this town as a small-town community. If you, if you look up there and you look at where that parcel is, look at all the white lands around there. Those are not subdivisions. If they turn into subdivisions, you've got yourself a mini-city here. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, anybody, absolutely, as it pertains to this annexation.
My name is Mark Cooper. I live at 1765 Vincent Road, so I am directly across the street from one of the entrances to this potential subdivision. What this gentleman said right here, I agree wholeheartedly. I moved there 27 years ago, this past August, for the exact same reason he moved there, was to enjoy some peace and quiet, hear the birds singing, see the deer run through the yard late at night. That is going to take all that away. How would you feel if you lived across the street from him?
So I just got to have some clarification here. What we are discussing right now is, are you in favor of annexation of this property or are you not in favor?
I am not.
Anything else subdivision-wise or anything else is not what we are discussing right now. So every comment that comes before this council on this item has to be about the annexation only, okay? There will be time as we proceed down to G, 6G, that the kind of comments that you're offering would be adequate to state for the record.
Okay, I understand. This is the first time I've ever been to a town council meeting.
It's okay.
So it's a big learning process for me.
Yeah, well, listen, I've been at this 20 years, and I still don't know everything, sir, so I'm right there with you. But I just needed to make that clarification, that please keep your comments to the annexation issue, and as we proceed with this agenda, the opportunity will come to express those type of sentiments for the record.
Okay, then I vote no.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Betty Fagan, and I live at 200 Neuse Ridge Drive, and I wrote a lot of notes, but I just understand now, sir, that I can't read them tonight, and that's perfectly fine. I'll come back another time. As far as the annexation goes, I say no. That's it for tonight. I want to thank you for listening to me.
Okay, and just so you know for future reference, at the end of every council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and you can come and speak about any item that you would like to speak on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is John Scarper. We've met before. I've been here several times. I also live at 1304 Neuse Ridge Drive in Clayton, which is just down the road from this proposed annexation. I am vehemently opposed to the annexation, especially since it's non-contiguous to the city of Clayton as it is. The Town of Clayton has no border with this property whatsoever, so it's as if we're just plucking something out of the county of Johnston and incorporating it in, or that's their application, incorporating it into Clayton. I've been stretching my imagination trying to figure out what the advantage to Clayton is of that, and gentlemen and ladies, I can't figure out one single thing that this does for the city and town of Clayton. It does nothing for us. It doesn't give us any additional tax revenue. It doesn't do anything. If you examine it, as you said we have to, just the question of annexation. Annexation without the approval of the other two proposals does nothing for us. It just burdens us, and it takes away from the resources of the city, and it burdens us in a way that's completely unnecessary. So for that reason and for other reasons, which we'll discuss as the other options come up, I am opposed.
So I would just like to offer a little bit of clarification to your statement and just share with you that when Glen Laurel was developed, it was Clayton, North Carolina's first satellite annexation, that there were no continuous borders to Glen Laurel, and we have learned that there is value in satellite annexation because of how Glen Laurel is and the reputation that it has within the Town of Clayton. So just for clarification, so you know, the first satellite annexation of non-contiguous adjoining the city limits was Glen Laurel, and I think you can see the benefit from what has happened with Glen Laurel. I'm not arguing with you, I just wanted to share the knowledge that where you're living was the first satellite annexation. Yes. Okay. Now, I just want to give some clarity because I'm like, that was the very first one, and really, back in the day, the citizens that lived in the Clayton area were like, why are we going all the way out there? You know, and what's the purpose, and how's it going to benefit? And through the years, we have seen how that has been tremendously beneficial, not only for the community of Glen Laurel and the good people who live out there, but how it has enhanced the Town of Clayton. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on annexation?
Josh Nash, 63 Rainwater Court. We're directly across one of the entrances into the, into this proposed subdivision. We are vehemently opposed to this development, to this annexation. The reason they're trying to annex it into the, into the city is because they can get a smaller dwelling unit per acre, and what that's going to do to the surrounding area is that drastically increases how many cars and people who live on that road. It's a really small road. It's twisty, it's curvy, it's up and down, there are accidents all the time on that road, and this subdivision in the dwelling units that they're proposing is going to increase cars on that road of over 1,000 cars per day, just if one person per dwelling unit drives to and from. As we all know, most, most homes now have two working people, which means that's probably going to jump probably closer to 2,000 cars per day. On that little teeny-tiny, twisty-turvy road, your accidents are going to go up significantly because people don't slow down, and so that's one of the reasons we're opposed to it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Calibro, and I live at 1313 Neuse Ridge Drive. I'm on the corner of Neuse Ridge and Vincent, and I'm against the annexation.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I'm Lenore Henry. I live in Windsor Green Drive, directly, directly across from the subdivision. I've been living there for 25 years. I contribute to our community by going to work every day. I also pay taxes, and I do not feel that this property should be annexed into the city. Leave it as it is. We're not opposed to development, just not as much as you want to put there. The road cannot handle it. It is an old road. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristi Buckley. I live at 73 Sky Grove Drive, and I am very much opposed to the annexation of this property because of what they want to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, friends. I'm Jennifer Carer, and I live at 100 Windsor Green Drive. I'm right on the corner of Vincent and Windsor Green. I guess the first entrance would be across from my house, so I have some questions about the annexation. If it, do you vote on that then tonight? Is that something that's going to happen then tonight? And if you say yes to that, what happens at that point?
Then that property becomes property that is located within the corporate limits for the Town of Clayton.
Okay, and then the developer can do pretty much whatever they want, or you still have to go through the other letters, right?
Oh, yes. There's still a huge amount of hurdles to jump through.
Excellent, okay. So what's the timeline of that looking like? Say you say yes, what does that look like in terms of the timeline between all the hurdles and then the actual, you know, we start breaking ground? What, do you know what that looks like?
A while.
Like years?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, like months?
Yeah.
Okay, within 2024, I think.
I'm guessing, I have no idea.
Right, okay.
Right. Sooner than later.
Yeah, so.
Is the norm in this type of process.
Sure. So I guess the concern would be, is, is it putting the cart, what is the phrase, cart before the horse? So the highway obviously is already kind of a problem. It's very light of traffic, a lot of subdivisions already building in there, so maybe some of the stoplights and stop signs and other things that are concerned should happen first before they start building a bunch of houses to put a bunch of people in there. Schools already not.
Ken, so we're just talking about annexation.
I know.
And you're getting into the topic of future subdivision, and that is item 6G, so I need your comments to pertain to annexation of this property only.
Right. I, I guess I was just trying to make clarification of, we are talking about the annexation, so if you vote on it and you say yes, then it's a lot, I was just trying to wrap my head around what that looks like in a timeline and what that process sort of is, as just a person who kind of lives there and has to listen to all the traffic, you know, and chose to live there, so.
Sure.
It's just a concern.
No, that's perfect.
All right, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to the council for any questions or entertain a motion to delay the vote if that is the wishes of this council. Mr. Sims?
Motion to delay the vote.
Second?
I have a motion to delay, to delay the vote on this annexation petition. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, item 6B is a public hearing for the annexation petition 2023-101-ANX Rocky Branch Farm.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is for the sister property next door. This, this petition is for another 73.753 acres of non-contiguous real property into the town limits of Clayton. Again, this property, as we all know now, is associated with the conditional zoning coming up later down in the agenda. Here is the location, it is the parcel right next to it, as you can see here, also along Vincent Road and across from Windsor Green Estates near Hidden Valley. This one is more adjacent to Glen Laurel East here. Again, just a view, vision of how far away it is from our current border and boundary, and that this again is a satellite annexation, again, the applicant is here, staff is prepared to answer questions, and again, public comment, people may have wishes to speak on it.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on this, and anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. However, in order to expedite things a little bit, I think it would also be okay if you would like to raise your hand if you are in opposition to this parcel being annexed into the Town of Clayton. That allows the town council to see who is here and what you're standing for, and it also gets you on video camera, so we have that for the record, so it shows public input was received. All right, thank you very much. Now, if there are individuals in the room who would like to speak to this, please step forward and state your name to the record. Thank you. No one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to the council for their deliberations, question and answer, or to delay the vote if that is the wishes of this council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to delay the vote.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to delay the vote on this annexation petition. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a public hearing for annexation petition 2023-164-ANX Lee Court.
Counsel, before you, we have a town-initiated annexation. The town is wishing to annex the 7.8 acres of contiguous real property inside town limits that is part of a right-of-way along Lake Lee Court, is within our ETJ, located here just near Op Center along NC Highway 42 West. Here's an aerial image of it here. You can see it's just a little cul-de-sac here. We believe that, you know, in previous annexations, this right-of-way was left out, and so as a part of our due diligence, we're going back and trying to clean this up, and that is why this annexation is before you today. Just as future land use map shows, this area is high-density residential. The property around this, this right-of-way is already developed, so that's not much of an issue here, but we just wanted to provide that for your context.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? This has been noted as a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this Lee Court annexation, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a vote that we approve adoption ordinance number 2024-01-03, no, 04, excuse me.
Did you read the right number?
04.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second for the adoption ordinance 2024-01-04. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a public hearing for annexation petition 2023-165-ANX Gregory Drive.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this again is another town-initiated annexation off of Gregory Drive, located within the town's ETJ. This is a contiguous annexation of 3, 0.325 acres of real property into the town. Again, this is a part of Gregory Drive, located here off of Amelia Church Road right there. You can see it's just a small portion of the right-of-way that was missed in the annexation when this rest of the subdivision was built. Again, coming back behind and trying to clean up and make sure that the entire street is, that's part of the town's network, is part of the annexation, part of the town limits. Again, even though most of that land there is already developed and single-family homes, just showing you again that it's within, where it is, where it falls within our future land use map.
All right. Any questions of staff? If not, I'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing- If not, I'll open the public hearing and anyone wishing to speak on this annexation of Gregory Lane, please step forward and state your name for the record. Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm still Betty Fagan and I still live at 200 Newsteridge Drive. I just feel uncomfortable with the, it's just a small piece. It's just a small piece and it's just a small piece. Because if all the little small pieces are all going to add up to a big piece, in my mind, I'm not sure that that's correct. Feel like even the small pieces, we're not sharing the land properly with the beings that live here with us. I mean, we're putting down asphalt everywhere and taking down beautiful trees. And I, I have an issue with that myself. I don't know how everybody feels about that. But it's one piece at a time and the town, the town's a beautiful town. And I don't think it's so beautiful with asphalt and trees. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Mr. Casey?
Is it possible, town manager, you kind of explain these road annexations so the community understands what's going on?
Sure. So in these particular cases, fragment pieces of the property, most, most are all representing what is currently public right-of-way where infrastructure was built, constructed, and then the land and the infrastructure was dedicated and accepted by the town. This step with the annexation was missed. By cleaning these up, it clarifies jurisdiction so that folks like our police department have all the legal rights to be able to enforce anything that happens along those properties as well as makes all of the land contiguous within the corporate limits. So these are really cleanup items that, you know, again, prior decisions for subdivision or dedications of lands and, and, and infrastructure have already been completed. And these are things that we've caught for our planning department or for our emergency services folks. So we hope we don't miss these in the future. We've got a process in place so that that doesn't occur, but we do want to make sure that we get these clarified now for clear jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-01-05.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the adoption ordinance 2024-01-05. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the 2023-176 RZ Clayton ABC Store rezoning.
Good evening, mayor, council. The first item that I have for you tonight is the Clayton ABC Store rezoning, project number 2023176RZ. This is a 1.63 acre parcel located adjacent to the town center development. It is currently zoned O and I or office institutional. The applicant is wanting the parcel to be rezoned to highway business, which is B3 under our new, under the adoption of the UDO. It would now be, excuse me, CM, CMD, CRM, sorry, corridor business. However, it's still reflected as B3 in this application due to it being before the UDO adoption. It's located at 8175 US Highway 70, Business West. And the current use, it is a vacant parcel. As you can see in the current zoning, it is surrounded by B3. The proposed zoning, it would be more in accordance with the surrounding zoning. In the future land use map, it is within the high density residential district. However, it is in the neighborhood center overlay, which you can see the description of there, which the use is in accordance with that designation. At the planning board meeting in December, it was recommended by planning board to approve this rezoning based on consistency with the future land use map and the 2024 comprehensive growth plan. The applicant is here for any questions as well as staff.
All right, any questions for staff? If not, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Gary McKay with Redline Engineering on behalf of the client or the applicant in this evening. Address is 123 Raleigh Street in Fuquay Varina. Just wanted to say we're here if you have any questions or if we can be of any assistance. I know that one thing that the planning department, uh, planning board wanted to talk about was traffic. I will point out that the ABC store is currently two doors down from this piece of property. We're planning to relocate to this corner so that we would have access through the shopping center and not directly off of, not have our main access on Highway 70 to help that. The traffic situation that's there currently is pretty terrible, just to be frank. But also, there's a strong desire to develop the 75 acres behind us and people keep coming and saying, we want you to move, we want you to move, we want you to move, you're in the way. So, because where the ABC store is now is where the town would really like a main interest to whatever large development will come in behind. I'm assuming a mixed-use development because that keeps coming up and, and we keep being approached by that. So this would make a safer location for us, but unfortunately, it's O and I, not B3. And it needs to be B3 for a retail use. So just want to throw that out there since we discussed it at the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion. Ms. Archer?
I had no comments but was ready to make a motion to approve unless anyone has a comment. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-01-08 along with the consistency and reasonableness statement.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption ordinance 2024-01-08 and the consistency and reasonable statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next public hearing is 2023-126 CZM Pond Street Duplexes Conditional Res zoning.
Thank you, mayor, council. The next item that I have for you is Palm Street Duplexes, item 2023126CZM. This is the rezoning of properties from R6 zoning to conditional zoning. The applicant is looking at the conditional zoning in order to build two, two family structures for a total of four units. The density here would be 8.77 units per acre. The property size collectively is almost half an acre at 0.456 acres. And the location is at 914 and 916 Pond Street. Here's the overall site plan. I did provide the landscaping detail on this. The access to the location would be through Durham Road via US 70 Business. Water would be, water and sewer would be provided by the town and electric would as well. Within the proposed development, you have existing R6 zoning here, plan residential area here, R8 here. This is Durham Street, which leads up to US 70 Business. The project will comply with town of Clayton stormwater. The public water and sewer is available on Pond Street and electric services, of course, available as well. The development will be accessed through the stated streets and due to its size, no improvements are requested or required. Within the landscaping requirements, we will see a type C landscaping buffer with a six-foot vinyl privacy fence along the outermost sides and rear along the project boundaries. And interior landscaping must meet the UDC requirements. In regards to architectural standards, we did work with the client in order to have a minimum of 25% brick or stone on the front facade. The remaining structural elements would be out of vinyl and then standard shingles. I do have a draft of that. This was before we had agreed to the masonry elements on the front facade, but I did want to provide the elevation that they had provided us. And we did find that it was consistent with the adopted plans of the town. The 2045 growth plan identifies majority of the development site as high density residential and abuts an area marked as medium density residential. The development, while less dense than that proposed in the future land use map, is complementary to the existing and neighboring lower density single-family residences and eases the area into a slightly higher density. This development also promotes the 2045 growth plan's land use and housing goal LU3, which encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will need, meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes and ages. And it also promotes goal LU4, which is to provide safe, sound and well-maintained housing in neighborhoods. As stated before, the property is currently zoned R6, which is the town's most dense residential district exclusionary of non-single-family residences. And staff does believe that the proposed project promotes suitable development considering the future land use map and promoting gentle density in infillots, making use of underutilized parcels to grow housing opportunities. We also believe that the proposed development utilizes the infillots to meet the housing needs of the town and it introduces an alternate housing type than those in the immediate vicinity while keeping with the character of the area. Looking at the capacity of adequate public facilities, the school proposed, the schools in the proposed area would be East Clayton Elementary, Clayton Middle, Clayton High and Clayton High School is on the county's capless for 2023 and 2024. Again, the development would be accessed via, by US 70 Business, via Durham Road, wastewater treatment. It would be served by existing sewer infrastructure on Pond Street. The public water is also available on Pond Street and the development will follow the town stormwater ordinance. Do you apologize for that being cut off? It states that legal purposes of the zoning are not contravened and any sort of benefit to the developer is not in exchange for higher develop, higher, excuse me, higher worth to the community. There's no adverse effect on adjoining property owners that we've seen, that we foresee. However, in the event of an unforeseen adverse effect, the benefit of meeting the demand in housing while promoting infill development outweighs the concern for an unforeseen adverse effect. And no one property owner or small group will benefit to the detriment of the general public. While the owners or developers may benefit from the development, staff believes that with the proposed conditions, there will be no detriment to the general public. And through the conditional zoning approval criteria, it outlines compliance with section 155.203L and all of the applicable requirements of the chapter or analysis or justification for deviations, consistency with Clayton general design guidelines, conformance of the proposal with stated purpose of requested conditional zoning district, compatibility of proposed development with adjacent community, quality of design and ability of overall development plan to ensure unified cohesive environment at full buildout, compatible relationships between each component of the overall project, fiscal impact of the proposal, providing adequate bicycle and pedestrian links within development and within adjacent communities, effectiveness with, which proposals protect, preserves ecologically sensitive areas. And staff believes that the applicant has met the criteria through site plan conditional zoning narrative and proposed conditions. So for some considerations, if approved, the conditional zoning district master plan and narrative will be recorded with Johnson County and shall provide guidance for future development for this land. The conditional zoning district master plan and narrative shall not expire and will run with the land. Town council may recommend conditions be added or removed and the developer must agree to any imposed conditions. The staff did recommend approval and continues to, recommended approval to planning board, of course, and continues to. Subject to the 11 conditions of approval, planning board. May I offer a correction for this? They did not unanimously recommend this. It was a four to one vote to approve the conditional zoning district based on the proposed application meeting criteria for approval. And that was based on the consistency statement, which I have also provided after the conditions of approval, which are also in the staff report. I'm here for any questions as well as the applicant.
So I just need clarification on, because it really, it's a technical matter, it's not really that important, but I just need clarification that a couple of slides back, I read that it was a unanimous and now you are saying it was not unanimous?
That is correct. It was a four to one vote.
Okay. So we will let the record reflect that regardless of what's written and provided on the screen, it stands corrected with a four one vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? All right, this has been noted as a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Donnie Adams, professional engineer with Adams &amp; Hodge Engineering, 312 East Main Street, 314 East Main Street, Clayton, North Carolina. My firm is, we are the civil site planners and engineers on this project. As Stephen noted going through the, his presentation, we do meet the criteria, we've worked with the staff through this process. As you know, with the conditional zoning, we self-impose the conditions. We worked with town, with town staff and added a condition for the enhancement of the facade. And we believe this is going to be a good project. It blends in, it's a, one big thing is it's an infill project. As you can see, we're utilizing existing utilities that are out there and making a blend between recent development and development that's been there for, for decades. Also noted is, again, just one thing to pull out, one of the criteria talks about the pedestrian and bicycle routes. And so, we don't have a bicycle route, but we do, we are extending sidewalk that's not currently in the neighborhood. We're extending it along our fronts connecting to the sidewalk from the adjacent neighborhood. That being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. I mean.
All right, any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Archer?
I had a few comments. I do think the application is reasonable. There are other duplexes in this area, in this general neighborhood. The materials and the The materials and the design proposed are consistent with other homes in the area, and I do believe it's a good use of infill space. So I would support this application.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-01-07, along with the consistency and reasonableness statement.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-01-07 and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Up next is 2022-195 CZM Vincent Road Conditional Resoning with Master Plan.
Hi, Council. Megan, we're moving on to the CZM here, the conditional zoning of Vincent Road. Currently, like we said in the previous annexations, this property currently allows outside of the town's jurisdiction, both being ETJ and the town limits. The applicant is requesting, should the annexations be approved, that we allow them to come in under this conditional zoning residential. The total size of property for this project would be 146 acres. Again, the property is located off of Vincent Road near Wintergreen Estates, Hidden Valley, and Glen Laurel East subdivision, as shown there on the map. Make it a little bit bigger for everyone. Here we have a comparison of the surrounding properties. Again, given that this is outside our jurisdiction, the surrounding areas are currently zoned for agricultural residential within Johnson County zoning plan and district. I do want to highlight some things. In the November 27th Planning Board meeting, the applicant made some changes, and they brought in a proposed project that had 278 units. I'm sorry, they brought in a project that had a proposed density of 2.78 units per acre. It had a maximum unit, maximum units of 406. 315 were single-family, 91 were single-family attached. So townhouses, there were 91 townhouses as part of that proposal. Since that time, since November 27th, they've provided an update. They've actually changed those numbers. So it's, they've reduced the density from 2.78 to 2.55. They've reduced the total number of maximum units from 406 to 373 and reduced the number of single-family detached, regular single-family homes from 315 to 282. And they've kept the town, single-family attached townhome number the same at 91%, not 91.
Can you restate that for me? From 315 to what?
Absolutely. Two, 315, single-family detached to 282, single-family detached to regular, single-family unit homes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The access provided for this lot will be two access points off of Vincent Road with a third emergency access that will only be able to be accessed by emergency services. We've seen similar proposals for, like the River Mews proposal that came before you last year. They also had to do this given DOT's restrictions for access along one single road. Water and sewer will be provided by Johnson County and the town. Electric will be a Duke Energy Progress provider. I wanted to just provide you here, this is the recently adopted comprehensive land use plan and map for Johnson County. I'm just going to highlight here real quick for you. Again, this is Clayton up here. This area, this yellow with the green is the Neuse River, and the Vincent properties are located around here. The future land use for Johnson County calls for this to be low-density residential. And within their recently updated future land use map, they characterize this as residential developments comprised mainly of single-family detached homes with large lots, usually no greater than half an acre in size per lot. And then here, I wanted to provide you with an example of the town's future land use map. That's the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. Again, right outside our jurisdiction here. The area most adjacent to where the Vincent Road proposal is, is low-density residential, which has a gross density limit of three or less units per acre. I also did include the call out for our agricultural rural residential from our future land use and comprehensive growth plan, as this calls for no greater than two units per acre. I just wanted to call this out because along the borders of our limits and around the ETJ areas, we do still have this agricultural/rural residential area. And just because it's not present here as part of our future land use map doesn't mean that this particular area wouldn't, at one point, if we were to expand our future land use, our ETJ wouldn't be considered agricultural rural. That's a possibility. One thing to highlight and just point out to you is that in low-density residential, single-family attached townhomes are allowed. They just can't make up more than 25% of the total units of the site. Whereas in the agricultural rural residential, that type of unit is not permitted. That's just something to keep in mind. Again, here we have the layout, the master plan that the applicant has provided. On the left, we have the one that was presented to the Planning Board on November 27th, 2023. There was 315 units, 91 townhomes, with a density of 2.78. Just to bring some changes that have been made since then. Sorry, I'm really enjoying this little highlighter here. They've reduced the number of 52 wide-unit lots in this area, and they've increased the number of 62 wide-unit lots in their newest proposal here. The townhome area hasn't changed because they're still providing the same amount, but they have brought all of the smaller lots towards the front, and they're providing a larger, wider unit towards the back of the property now. We provided some dimensional standards just for reference. In case there was any confusion, I'd like to clarify, under the current zoning, we have the AR, which is the Johnson County Agricultural Residential Dimensional Standards, and under RE, which is now RL, under the new UDO, is kind of a very comparable zoning district within Town of Clayton's jurisdiction. Those who are provided to you, just as kind of a reference, you know, the minimum lot size for the agricultural residential was 30,000 square feet, unless in a watershed protection area. Where for the Town of Clayton, you know, if you had public water and public sewer, the minimum lot size could be 20,000 square feet. Just wanted to provide that to you. Over to the side, we have open space zoning dimensional standards in the R10, which would now be the RLD Residential Low Density Zoning District. We have 8,000 square feet for detached homes. Typically, this would be 10,000 square feet, but because this is part of an open space subdivision, and they're dedicating more open space for conservation or just passive or active open space, it does allow them to reduce that to the 8,000 square feet total. Here we also have the minimum for single-family attached townhomes lot is 4,000 square feet. Their proposed is keeping with that. The main difference here is what they're proposing for the single-family detached, they're proposing three different types of products for you. They're proposing one, a 6,000-foot, square foot, 52-foot-wide lot option, a 7,000-square foot with 62 feet of width option, and a 8,000-square foot at 72 feet wide option for you. So there's three different products that they're proposing to you in this project Traffic trip, traffic trip generation. These are the original traffic generation that was part of the original submit. This included their 400, approximately 70 or 480 units originally that they proposed. This has changed. Now they're, they're obviously proposing much fewer units. I will leave that up to the applicant to provide you with updated numbers, but as currently they have not been presented to us. As far as development standards, the project will have to comply with all Town of Clayton Stormwater ordinances, and it will receive the public water through Johnson County. It's available on Vincent Road. There is existing sewer that can be accessed through Summerland Pump Station adjacent to the development. There will need to, there will be a need to build an additional pump station in order to provide capacity and sewer access to the entire site. This pump station could provide additional capacity and resources for additional developments in the area, should it be built. The total requested gallons per day, just so you guys are aware for capacity, after adjusting the numbers for the 373 units, is, and the clubhouse comes out to approximately 93,500 gallons per day. The electrical service will be available through, I think it says Town of Clayton, but on another slide said Duke Energy Progress. I apologize about that. We'll get that cleared up for you. As far as landscaping, as with all conditional zoning in the Town of Clayton, there's a Class C buffer that's required. That requires also an opaque screening, whether that be fence, berm, or some type of masonella element, along with perimeter plantings. The interior landscaping must meet the street, and the street yard trees must meet the UDC requirements. The open space amenities, they're required to have a minimum of 25%. This proposal has about 40% that they're proposing for conservation in open space area. Given its location being a satellite annexation, there's no public greenways currently proposed as part of this development, but they are proposing to have front edge widening and provide sidewalks on the side of the property of the street. As far as architecture standards, the all-residential buildings shall include brick, wood, stone, fiber, cement, and/or wood composite. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited, but vinyl accents such as windows shall be permitted. All residential units shall have a minimum of 25% masonry on the front facade. Single-family detached shall have either a crawl space foundation or a stem wall foundation or elevated/raised foundation. Townhomes shall have a slab on grade foundation, and no two consecutive single-family detached homes shall contain the exact same front elevation with regard to materials or color palette. Single-family detached homes directly across the street from one another shall not have identical facades with regard to materials or color palette. No two consecutive townhome buildings shall contain the same front elevation with regard to materials or color palette. As far as consistency in zoning district criteria, consistency with adopted plans and the policy of the town. Again, it's located outside our jurisdictions and our town limits. The land use map does not show that this area is low-density residential, but it could be considered low-density residential if you consider the most adjacent town zone properties. With that, they would be, if you consider it low-density, they would be within line with, between the one and three units per acre that is generally accepted in a low-density residential project. Proposed density does not meet the envisioned in 2045 Growth Plan and is inconsistent with the Growth Plan. Again, it's not part of the Growth Plan. We'll kind of discuss that further in the town's staff recommendation, obviously, forward. We believe that it improves the balances of uses and meets the demands of the town. The area, as far as the balance of uses, the area is comprised of residential uses primarily. All of them are single-family detached. There are no townhome units in the area. The proposed conditional zoning would allow for more suburban-style, single-family detached units in addition to proposing the townhouses. As far as capacity of adequate public facilities and services, development proposed would be served by Hamilton Elementary, Riverwood Middle School, and Clayton High. Clayton High and Riverwood Elementary is currently on the cap list for the 2020, that says 2022, but it's actually the 2023, 2024 cap list for Johnson County, should anyone be considering Riverwood Elementary at that time. Again, the development will be accessed off of Vincent Road, where improvements will be made. It'll be called out by the applicant on what the improvements that will have to be made. Open spaces provided as far as park and recreational facilities. Wastewater treatment will be conducted to pump stations at Summerland, subject to all the town water, waste allocation, wastewater allocation policy. For legal purposes, the zoning is not contravened. All town ordinances, procedures, and approvals will be followed. Under no adverse effects on adjoining property owners, development does not match density and unit type of surrounding developments, and improvements to existing public road connectivity and public utility interventions will help mitigate some impacts. But again, there's a difference there. No one property owner shall benefit from the detriment of the general public. With imposed conditions presented and agreed upon by the applicant and staff, we believe that the conditions will help deter any kind of detriment to the general public. Again, the master plan approval criteria, compliance with, this was submitted under the old UDC, so compliance with Section 155.203L and all other applicable requirements of this chapter or analysis or justification for deviations. It must be consistent with Clayton's general design guidelines, conformance of proposal with stated purpose of requested conditional zoning districts, compatibility of proposed development with adjacent community, quality in design, ability in overall development plan to ensure a unified cohesive environment at full buildout, compatible relationships between each component of the overall project, fiscal impact of the proposal, providing adequate bicycle and pedestrian links within development with adjacent community, and the effectiveness with which the proposal protects and preserves ecological sensitive We have 28 recommended conditions of approval. The first one requires that the applicant would provide an approved master plan narrative and conditions approval, or final approval for the planning department. Number two, development will meet all the requirements of the Town of Clayton, including UDC, engineering, stormwater, and fire code standards. The town shall be, the development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the master plan and narrative as approved by town council. All parcels subject to this conditional zoning shall be annexed into the town prior to any other approvals. The developer shall be required to pay their proportional share of the Wilson Mills Fire District capital debt to the town prior to the effective date of annexations. The permitted uses for this conditional zoning include the following: single-family detached, single-family attached townhomes, park, fitness/recreation, and minor utilities. The development shall be limited to the following standards: A maximum of 373 total dwelling units. A maximum of 91 single-family attached townhomes. A maximum of 282 single-family detached homes with a maximum density of 255 dwelling units per acre. Number eight, as the conditional is, the single-family detached dwelling unit dimensional standards. As mentioned, there's a minimum heated square footage of 200 square feet per lot, per home. A minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet with 52-foot wide lots. A minimum of 7,000 square feet lots with 62 feet of width. A minimum of 8,000 square foot lots with a minimum of 72 feet in width. The maximum building height is 35 feet. Front setbacks 20 feet. Minimum setback from right of way to face of garage 25 feet. Minimum rear setback 15 feet. Minimum side setback for interior lots is 6 feet. Minimum side setback for corner lots is 10 feet. One condition that was added in between the planning board and this meeting tonight was the applicant added number nine. A minimum of 15% of single-family homes shall be a minimum of 3,000 square feet, considered executive housing. Number 10, single-family attached townhomes standard dimensions. Heated space would be, will have to be a minimum of 1,500 square feet. Minimum lot width for townhomes will be 21 feet. Maximum building height for townhomes is 45 feet. Minimum front setback 25 feet. Minimum rear setback 15 feet. Minimum side interior setback 6 feet. And the mini, minimum side corner is 10 feet. All dimensional standards, not otherwise modified through these conditions and the approved master plan narrative, shall meet the applicable requirements within the UDC for number 11. Number 12, the development shall have a minimum of a 15-foot wide Class C buffer around the entire development perimeter with opaque screening. An additional recommended condition of approval presented by the applicant in number 13 is that a heavily landscaped berm, in addition to any required Town of Clayton landscaping requirements, shall be installed along the front edge of Vincent Road. 14, each single-family detached home shall have a minimum two-car garage. 15, each single-family attached townhome shall have a minimum of one-car garage. 16, the development shall include a community cabana or clubhouse and pool amenity area consisting of at least 15% masonry shields on the front facade. 17, in addition to community cabana and/or clubhouse, a minimum of the two of the following amenities shall be provided. These amenities include dog park, tot lot, playground, multi-use fields, picnic gazebo, disc golf, pickleball, community garden, tennis court, mini park, plaza, square, green space, and private greenway and trails. Number 13 lays out the following architectural standards that shall be required to be met for the single-family house, both attached and dehoused uses. Again, we mentioned on this, this includes uses materials such as brick, wood, stone, fiber, cement, and wood composite. Vinyl siding is prohibited, but vinyl accents such as windows shall be permitted. All residential units will have that minimum of 25% masonry on the front facade. The single-family detached will have either a crawl space foundation or a stem wall foundation or elevated/raised foundation. Townhomes shall have a slab on the found, on grade foundation. Again, the recommended conditions, no two town, no two consecutive single-family detached homes shall contain the same exact front elevation with regard to materials or color palette. Single-family detached homes directly across the street from each other shall not have identical facades with regards to materials or color palette. And no two consecutive townhomes shall contain the same front elevations with regard to materials or color palette. Number 19, all units within the development shall... Number 19, all units within the development shall include sustainable high-efficiency projects, products, and appliances, including low e-insulated windows, energy star dishwasher, low VOC paint, and fiber cement siding. 20, the development shall consist of three separately constructed access points. In addition to two access points shown on the approved master plan, the third entrance shall be constructed only to be used for emergencies on Vincent Road. The access construction requirements shall be determined by the appropriate town departments at the time of construction drawing review. The access point shall be gated and locked always. 21, no more than 30 certificates of occupancy will be issued when the development before the second required access point is constructed. 22, no more than 300 certificates of occupancy will be issued within the development before the third required access point, the emergency access only, is constructed. And 23, prior to the approval of construction drawings, the developer shall validate an adequate capacity in the downstream wastewater infrastructure, pump stations, and force mains to accommodate the proposed flow. 24, any proposed wastewater infrastructure, pump station, force main, gravity sewer required to serve this development shall be designed, constructed to serve the extent of the drainage basin, drainage basin able to be served by such infrastructure. 25, a modified street section for the stream crossing noted on master plan sheet L-2 shall be provided. 26, the development shall dedicate and construct the required improvements for Vincent Road along the property furniture equal to half of the ultimate typical section for Vincent Road listed in the transportation plan at the time of this proposal. At a minimum, the improvements will consist of roadway widening, curbing, curb and gutter, and sidewalk construction. 27 relates to roadway improvements from TIA prepared by Rami Kemp Associates with NCOD approval. They will shall be constructed prior to recordation of the first final plat. And from there, it's a list of the improvements that will be made along the roadways. The first one, NC 42 and Glen Laurel coordinate with NC DOT to develop a signal modification plan to allow for an eastbound right turn lane to overlap phase. Then there's the Glen Laurel and Vincent Road provide an exclusive southbound left turn lane with at least 500 feet of full width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper if right of way is available. Provide an exclusive northbound lane turn with at least 275 feet full length of width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper if right of way is available. Improvements to be made at Vincent Road and Windsor Green Drive/Site Drive 1. Construct Site Drive 1 with ingress and one egress lane striped as a shared left-through-right turn lane. Provide an exclusive eastbound left turn lane with at least 100 feet of full width storage with appropriate deceleration and taper. Provide stop control for southbound approach for Site Drive 1. For Vincent Road and Rainwater Court, which will be the site of Site Drive 2. Construct Site Drive 3 with one ingress, one egress, and one egress lane striped as a shared left-through-right turn lane. Provide an exclusive eastbound left turn lane with at least 100 feet of full width storage with appropriate deceleration and taper. Provide stop control for the southbound approach for Site Drive 2. 28, and the final one, to the extent that there is any conflict in the master plan narrative in these conditions, these conditions shall hold. Just a quick mention, there were two, the public hearing was originally held on September 25th, 2023. That meeting was continued by the planning board until November 27th, 2023. At both meetings, there was a section for public comment. The planning board heard many members of the community speak up at the planning board in relation to traffic, road infrastructure, safety, density, stormwater, and the impact of property values. In addition to that, included in your packet was a petition of 500 signatures of neighboring property owners and community members who are against this proposal and conditional As far as staff recommendation, in the first meeting in September 2025, 2023, we had four inconsistencies that we were, that caused us to vote to deny this project. Since then, the applicant has worked and they have addressed two of our inconsistencies, but there are still two that remain and that we still consider as inconsistent, and for that, we still recommend denial. Number one, one of the inconsistencies is that the development is located outside the town's planning jurisdiction and is not included in the 25, 2045 comprehensive growth plan or the future land use map. And number four is the other inconsistency, the proposed conditional zoning district is inconsistent with conditional zoning criteria. Number two, suitability of the subject property for use is permitted by the current versus the proposed conditional district. Due to the surrounding zoning districts not permitting a product, a project of such density by requesting a density nearly, that at the time was nearly double that of the parcel surrounding the subject development on all sides of single-family attached units. Again, we just wanted to point out that there, the low-density residential generally considered greater than half an acre lot size as far as the future land use map goes for Johnson County. As far as the Clayton's future land use map goes, it's really, the council could decide whether or not they feel that if it's, this area could fit the area of low-density residential, or if it's more fitting for the agricultural residential that our future land use map provides. The planning board on November 27th did recommend, to make a recommendation for approval to the town council on the proposed conditional rezoning and provided the accompanying statement of consistency and reasonableness. They said, while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map and the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan in that the development is located outside the town's planning jurisdiction and is not included in the growth plan. The future land use map will be updated to be consistent with this rezoning request from appropriate corresponding land use category. Per North Carolina Statute 160D 605A, this action is reasonable in public interest in that the surrounding land uses approximate to the town plan's corporate limits our residential uses. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area. So town council action, town council may make a motion to approve, deny, continue. The public hearing is deemed appropriate. Town council may recommend new conditions. The applicant must agree to the new conditions for them to be binding. Town council shall consider that approval of this rezoning request will amend the town's future land use map and shall be recorded within Johnson County's registered deeds, and the rezoning shall run with the land. Town council may make a motion referencing the statement of consistency and reasonableness provided in the staff report, should they make a motion for approval. Provided to you by staff also, should the time come, is a motions for consistency statements provided here. The one in red on the back, option number four for denial, is a staff recommendation, but you are welcome at the time and when it comes to that, to choose any of these that you feel is most appropriate for your decision. The applicant is here and has a presentation. In addition, there are many people in the public who would just like to make comment. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Sims?
I got one. And I apologize, but could you remind me, what is the Class C buffer? What's the description of that?
Absolutely, yes. So the Class C buffer, there's different widths, but it's our most intense buffer that was in the previous UDC. So it'll be a number of plantings at a certain width, and then it'll have the opaque screening. So that's a minimum of six feet, whether that be berm, masonry element, or a solid wood fence that will provide screening to adjacent properties. And then in addition to that, in the conditions, the applicant did state that they would provide an additional berm. So that could be the berm, and then the additional Class C options.
Additional, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Casey?
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks for that presentation. I have a few questions, so just bear with me. Just for clarification, did you say this is a town of Clayton or a Duke Energy customer?
I'll have to double-check that. I apologize. It had two different things right there, but I will double-check on that for you.
Okay. No worries. Appreciate that. Next question.
Councilman Casey?
Yes.
This would be, sorry, Joshua Baird Engineering Director. This will be Duke Energy. Town of Clayton does not have lines in this area.
Yeah, that's what I thought it read.
Okay. Thanks, Joshua. Next question. I saw you had the graph, you had different types of traditional zoning categories, residential estate, open space. What is that density? Is that our minimum lot size? Is that 12,000 square feet lots?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part of that?
For residential estate conditional zoning, what is the open space minimum lot size requirement? I think it's 12,000 square feet. I just want to verify that.
Yeah, so if you were to do the, which was a residential estate, now RLL, residential large lot in the new U, under open space subdivision, it's 12,000 square feet would be the minimum lot size.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Next question, and this may be for Joshua, and it kind of is a two-part question. Is there any expectation or any foreseeable request for easements to any of the other surrounding parcels of land next to this, this proposed development? I know we obviously can't say in absolute, but is there any intent or any thought?
Sure. Joshua Baird Engineering Director, also acting Water Resources Director. Looking at a proposed technical memo and concept plan, looks back from November of 2022. It looks like the plan was for the pump station to have a force main that comes out, stays in the public right of way, and does enter some existing sewer infrastructure in Glen Laurel. Without that final design, it's difficult to say whether there would be any off-site easements associated with that or not. Based on the technical memo and the analysis, this project's flow would flow through Glen Laurel, and there are some off-site upgrades and improvements. I know Summerlin was mentioned in the PowerPoint, but there's also three other pump stations. This would flow through Glen Laurel. We have Glen Laurel 1, Laurel 2, and Laurel 3 that this would flow through. There are some additional upgrades in those, including some of the gravity system in Glen Laurel, and the streets is not sized currently to take this. It is included in that memo, but there would be some off-site work. It does appear to be in some of the existing right of ways through Glen Laurel, but until we have a final concept or final design, it's difficult to say whether or not there would be any off-site easements required by the project specifically.
Okay. Thank you. And kind of tapping that second question, and you alluded to it a little bit. I know that part of the discussion with this particular proposal was potentially upsizing these, if there's any added pump station or needed pump station to make this a viable development project. Is that something that is possible? Is something, could it be too large? I mean, can you kind of go through the spill on that? And then typically, is that something that we're responsible for? Or is that something that, I know the developer's responsible for their portion, but if there's an upsized part of this, is that something that they would be responsible for? We'd be responsible for just?
So the town of Clayton Engineering, the MSSD, our engineering standards, does require a pump station force main to be sized for buildout of the entire basin. That's currently what's in there. However, there are some technical complications to when you have oversized equipment and not enough flow on it. So we'd have to look to see that balance. Looking at the memo that was provided back in November, it does appear that the flow that was analyzed was only for this particular project. It was not for the entire basin. There was no assumptions in terms of the other areas that could flow to this new pump station via gravity. The improvements that are noted in the memo through Glen Laurel and Glen Laurel pump stations are just for this particular project's flow, and they do not include anything from the rest of the basin. With that being said, this is and could, would be an ideal area for a regional pump station. It is downstream on the river of the other pump stations. We don't have any profiles or anything to technically or engineering confirm that is doable, but it would make sense that this would be a final location for a future regional pump station that could take Summerlin, Glen Laurel 1, Glen Laurel 2, and Glen Laurel 3 offline. Again, that's just based on the fact that it is further downstream, downriver, but I don't have any profiles to support that right now. Anything above this project, if there was any intent to take those offline, that is likely something that the, would be outside the developer's responsibility. If there was any request to go above and beyond and to take those offline and setting it up for a regional pump station in the future. However, we would expect to see, if this project moves forward, the pump station designed and laid out in such a way that additional gravity could be brought to it in the future.
Okay. Thank you. One, one final question. I saw in the conditions, and I know it's been mentioned by the developer, I believe, in the planning board meeting, that there's a potential for a left turn lane off of Glen Royal Road to Vincent Road. But I did not see that as one of the conditions, and this might be an applicant question versus a staff question, but is there, do y'all have any information on that? Are y'all having any conversations of DOT, the potential for that? Or is that something that is, needs to be added as a condition?
I know that the applicant has another presentation that goes into greater detail on the traffic concerns, and I'm sure they'd be happy to address that for you.
Okay. Awesome. No further questions. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Mayor Joshua Baird?
Yes.
Can I add one other thing to? I just want to note and clarify from the presentation. In terms of the water and being a water and sewer customer, Johnson County was mentioned in there. Just for clarification, it would, if this project is approved and does move forward through annexation and all, the intent would be that it is a town of Clayton customer. We would be receiving that water from Johnson County via our typical interconnect master meter process, but it would be a town of Clayton customer, not Johnson County customer.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Anyone else?
I do. I have some questions. Also, whenever the person speak about the road situation, I want to be able to make sure that they talk about the conditions, about the road improvement, as well as roadway widening. And I think you mentioned about the sidewalk constructions. I would like to have more information on those particular lines for road improvement, on how far would it be on that particular road? I want to know more information about that. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm sure the applicant would be happy to provide you with more information on the improvements that are required.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Bruce. I'll now open the public hearing, and I'll give the floor to the applicant.
My name's Bob Spence. I'm a local attorney in Smithville, North Carolina. I've been here before. And we want to emphasize that the developer here has used this legislative zoning as well as we can to be as open as possible to everyone who's involved in the planning of this development or in the approval of this particular plan, that it has gone in front of the planning board. We've continued the meeting, tried to make adjustments and communicate with the results of the first meeting. We had a second meeting, and it was passed at the second meeting, and we tried to develop those improvements into our plan. And we are here tonight, having listened to staff in this whole process. So it has been a several-stage plan. This is a 2024 development. Obviously, we want to try to make a development that is broadly accessible to a large number of the, a large percentage of our middle-class people who are going to be moving into the county and can afford to purchase in this subdivision. We have made it so that there is a broad appeal to homeowners and young people, as well as old. We have tonight the planner who originally helped work on these particular plans, and we will have her presentation. He'll give you as much detail as you want. We've got obviously a traffic engineer from Rami Kemp, and they have both been here twice before, and will present those particular aspects, including any concerns you have about impact on Vincent Road or elsewhere. Actually, we think we will improve the whole situation there, and we'll have a subdivision that really, a lot of this, if I pull up the other plats, which I can do later if you want to, I've got them on here, but you've heard a lot of information. I want to get to the heart of it. There are a lot of 60-foot lots, single-family residential lots in that area, and other subdivisions, especially to the north. This is an area that is, that Wilson Mills is approaching. So obviously, we looked at annexation both with Clayton and Wilson Mills. It's an area that is going to experience growth, and this is well-planned growth. It's a large enough track that you can have internal roads and still have a good overall plan. And that plan, we would like to have presented, Ms. Porter. Is that acceptable? You got any questions? I'm just trying to give you a broad overview. I'm not trying to duplicate everything.
All right. From a technical perspective, can we get the microphone turned up because we're having difficulty hearing?
That may be me just not.
It may be, but we have the capacity to make your small voice sound very big, so hold on just a minute.
It's not the normal complaint here.
While we're doing that, Mr. Spence, could we just get confirmation that the conditions as read by the planning staff are all agreeable and acceptable to the applicant?
We've been through all those conditions. Yes, I want to be sure none of them have changed before. Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's good to see you all tonight. I'm Pam Porter with TMTLA Associates, Landscape Architecture and Land Planning. With me tonight is Bill Harrow with Hopper Communities. He's the developer. Patrick Barbeau with Timmins Group is providing civil engineering, and Caroline Cheves with Rami Kemp/DRMP is a traffic engineer. We're all available for questions after the presentation, and thank you to staff for your over. overview of our request. So just a quick recap, staff gave a really good presentation of where we are, so I'm not going to go over all that, but I just want to highlight a couple things. Neighborhood outreach and previous planning board meetings. We held two neighborhood meetings, one on September 21st, 2022, and one on August 23rd, 2023. And we had two planning board meetings, as you know, we got continued, and then we got recommended for approval on November 27th. So this is our conceptual site plan, which was part of our packet, and the last submittal we made to the planning department had a maximum density of 2.55 dwelling units an acre with maximum number of units at 373. This afternoon, we reevaluated and sharpened our pencils a little bit to see if there was anything we can do on our end to help reduce this, to help to ease some of the concerns with the density. And we have a couple additional proffers for you tonight. So our additional proffers include a maximum density of 2.4 dwelling units an acre, a maximum number of units at 350, 87 townhomes, which is at 25%, and 263 single-family detached, and all of the other conditions still apply. And as noted, the townhomes are centrally located and buffered by the single-family detached that are around them, and there are three different lot sizes for single-family detached, 52, 62, and 72-foot wide lots. And the largest lot size is 72 feet wide, and we are going to proffer that to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet tonight. And the neighborhood, as mentioned, will include a major amenity, a pool and cabana, as well as other smaller recreational opportunities throughout the neighborhood. So I wanted to just quickly go over project history. So our initial submittal was on November 1st of 2022, and we started out with 457 units and 3.12 dwelling units an acre. We had our first planning board meeting, and we dropped that to 406 units and 2.78 dwelling units an acre, trying to hit below that 3 units an acre that was brought up at planning board. We've had various meetings with members of council, and our last submittal, as mentioned, was 373 units with a density of 2.55 units an acre, but with our proffers tonight, again, with... Excuse me. With a maximum of 350 units and 2.4 units an acre, we have reduced our overall number of units by 107 and reduced the density by roughly 24%. And our average lot size for the single-family detached is around 7,200 square feet. And again, the minimum lot size for the 72-foot wide lots will be 10,000 square feet. We wanted to include this context map as part of our presentation because it notes surrounding neighborhoods, as well as some of the local pharmaceutical and lab companies near our proposed development. And if you zoom in just a little bit, this graphic illustrates our proposal as it relates to other neighborhoods that may be similar in density, lot size, or having a mix of unit types. And we feel this is important as related to inconsistency number two in the staff report. If you take a slightly wider view of the area, you will see that there are other neighborhoods that are comparable or similar to what we're proposing. And the lots that are adjacent to us in Hidden Valley, they're obviously larger lots. They were done a while ago. They're also septic lots, so they have to support a septic system. So each septic system is on each lot, so we... Those lots can't be any smaller. They are the size that they need to be to support their septic systems. But as you can see on here, there are neighborhoods that are comparable. We've got River Muse, which was just approved recently with an overall density of 3 units an acre. It has single-family and townhomes and apartments. Summerlin, which has a density of 2.69 dwelling units an acre. Chandler's Ridge, 2.1 dwelling units an acre. Gordon Park, density 2.9 units an acre. Tuscany has single-family detached and townhomes with 60-foot wide lots. And then Flowers Plantation, which has a whole mix of stuff, but it does have single-family townhomes, and they have lots that are less than 5,000 square feet included. There's no builder involved in this yet, but we wanted to show elevations as an example of what we're trying to emulate with this development through our zoning conditions. And we understand the desire for quality housing in Clayton, which is why we've committed to no vinyl siding, and the siding will either be fiber cement like Hardy Plank, with a minimum of 25% masonry, either brick or stone, on the front facade of all the homes. All the single-family detached units will either have crawl space or elevated foundations, and there will be no slab-on-grade for the single-family detached units. And again, these are not the exact elevations that will be built, but these are replicative of what we could build in this neighborhood with our zoning conditions. A condition we added with our last submittal was for a heavily landscaped berm along Vincent Road. In addition to dressing up the frontage along the development, it will provide screening from Vincent Road. Drivers won't be looking into backyards, and residents won't be looking out at Vincent Road. And the berm, the landscaping, has not been designed yet, but we envision evergreen trees planted about four to six feet tall at installation, and shrubs planted at 18 to 24 inches tall at installation. And these larger plant sizes will provide a more immediate screening effect as the plant material has a chance to grow in. And this is a photo of heavily landscaped berm that was done about 12 or so years ago. So these plants in here have had time to grow and mature, but this is an example. There's homes behind these plants that you really can't see from the road. And I just want to quickly highlight some of our notable zoning conditions. So maximum density being proffered tonight will not exceed 2.4 dwelling units an acre. A minimum of 15% of the single-family detached homes shall be a minimum of 3,000 square feet. The minimum lot size for a single-family detached home shall be 6,000 square feet for the 52-foot wide lots, 7,000 square feet for the 62-foot wide lots, and 10,000 square feet for the 72-foot wide lots. And the development shall include a pool or cabana amenity area. In addition to that, minimum of two of the following amenities: dog park, totlauter playground, multi-use field, picnic gazebo, disc golf, pickleball court, tennis court, mini park, plaza, square, green, private greenway or trails, or community garden. And it's a minimum, so we may have more than that as we go through site plan. Predominant exterior building materials should be brick or stone, excuse me, brick, wood, stone, fiber cement, and/or wood composite. And the front facade of all units shall have a minimum 25% masonry, and vinyl siding shall be prohibited, but vinyl accents such as windows shall be permitted. And again, a heavily landscaped berm, in addition to any required Town of Clayton landscape requirement, will be installed along the frontage of Vincent Road. And before I hand this over to Caroline Cheves to talk about our traffic-related conditions, I just wanted to note a couple things. And she'll get into this more, but the project has significant roadway improvements, including a huge upgrade to the Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road intersection. And Caroline will go into the particulars, but as we've reduced our density, we have not reduced our roadway improvements. All of the roadway improvements that are committed to today have been the commitment since the beginning and will be completed to first final plat, which means until homes come online, all the roadway improvements are going to be installed. We're not phasing them with the phasing of the subdivision. We understand how important it is to get that intersection under control. We've heard the neighbors talk about it, so we want to make sure to proffer that, that they will all be done at once.
So are you saying that before anything gets sold in this development, all the road improvements would...
Before first final plat. So we're not phasing the road improvements with the phasing of the subdivision. They're all going to be done at once, essentially.
Wow, that's a good thing.
The development will commit to constructing the stoplight at Vincent Road and Glen Laurel Road if not yet completed by NC DOT once our lots come online. And as has been mentioned earlier in the staff presentation, this project has a significant pump grade commitment, pump station commitment tied to it, not only for our development, but also to serve as future developments and to replace the GL3 pump station. And Pat or Bill can get into that if you have more questions, as I am not a civil engineer. They can explain it more. And I say all this to say that we started at 457 units and now we're at 350. We've not made any reductions to any of the commitments as we've reduced the density. And we know how important it is to make sure that the roadway improvements get taken care of, and how important it is to make sure that sewers are working correctly, so we, again, have kept those at our original density with our reduction. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and I am available for questions, and I will now hand it over to Caroline.
Thank you, Pam. My name is Caroline Cheves. I am a licensed engineer in the state of North Carolina, and I prepared the traffic study. So I do just want to point out that I know Councilmember Williams had the question, the left turn lane is included in the traffic conditions, and we do have diagrams, but Pam did point out a couple of things that I also wanted to highlight on this slide. The first is that, yes, these roadway improvements are going in before the first final plat. So before any of our traffic that's going to be generated by this development, the roadway improvements will already be there. And another thing that I just wanted to point out, these roadway improvements are based off of that original TIA. Those traffic volumes that were shared in the staff presentation with our new density, we are reducing those traffic volumes by 1,500 trips a day. So that's a pretty significant reduction, and we are committed to the full storage lengths at Glen Laurel and Vincent Road of the 500 feet full with storage and 275 feet for the right turn lane, 500 feet for the left turn lane. Bruce already read through all of these, so I'll get into the diagrams going through this, the visualization. So this is a schematic just showing what the roadway improvements would look like at Site Drive 1. All of the yellow is additional pavement, so showing what that widening would look like for that left turn lane. That is just sort of your standard storage length there, 100-foot left turn lane with the appropriate D cell and taper length. And then with Site Drive 2, showing what that would look like with that left turn lane, again, 100 storage length with the appropriate D cell and taper. And then this intersection, I know, is the most talked about, so just wanted to really illustrate what that 500 feet of storage for that left turn lane is. That is a very significant improvement that is going to be done out here by this development. And as Pam stated earlier, NC DOT is installing a traffic signal there. It is under construction. I do believe that they have broken ground with it. It is expected to be installed before this development, but if for some reason that project gets stalled, we will move forward with that installation. And just wanted to also point out that with our development and these improvements, this intersection is expected to operate a level service C in the future. And I understand a lot of people, public, think that level service C, we want all of our roads to operate a level service A. So I just wanted to sort of explain to you what that nomenclature is, and just wanted to, you know, state that it's not something that we come up with ourselves. This is based on the Highway Capacity Manual, which is created by the Transportation Research Board, which is an international committee that comes together to, you know, to collaborate, come up with this manual. It gets updated every couple of years, and it is the basis that most DOTs and municipalities who do traffic engineering base things on. And level of service D is widely classified as the acceptable level of service before you want mitigation. So most of the time, what we're looking at is we are trying to mitigate everything to level service D or better. And just to show you what those classifications are, everything is based on the delay per vehicle. So at an unsignaled intersection, you don't want someone waiting more than 35 seconds at that intersection before clearing it, and that at a signaled intersection, you don't want anyone waiting there longer than 55 seconds. So what we're seeing is level service C, so we're seeing about 30 seconds of delay at this intersection. And also, just wanted to show you what it feels like, sort of a visualization of what these level of services feel like. Again, I just know that a lot of people hear these grade levels and think, oh, we want all of our roads to be an A+, but in reality, you would have six-lane highways for 20 cars on it during a day, and that's just not the best appropriation of funds. So just wanted to sort of give that visualization about that. And then one thing that I do want to show is just how important these turn lanes are. So this is what those queues would look like. So on the left side of the screen is a schematic showing how far back those queues would be in the future. Again, these are future volumes, not today volumes, but projecting everything out into the future, that's how long those queues would be. They'd back up pretty far. And once we put those turn lanes in with that signal, the queues would be mitigated within those turn lanes and significantly reduced. So just wanted to really highlight just how important these turn lanes are for this intersection and what this development is doing. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions now, I think. Are you going to come up? Yeah, and then Bill will come up and talk.
Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for highlighting some of your improvements. I do have a question regarding the actual turn lane, if there's going to be a turn left lane right there onto Vincent Road.
Yes.
Okay, is that something the applicant's willing to make as a condition?
Yes, it is. So that is basically implied once the signal is going in. That's just standard when it comes in terms of submitting roadway plans to NC DOT. They'd also require a signal modification plan, and so that would also include a protected left phase for that signal, but if we want to make it a zoning condition, I think. Yeah, I think we're okay to make that a zoning condition.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, anyone else?
Yes. So could you go over the storage capacity in that slide where you showed the red line, the green line? Nope. Yeah, that one. Could you go over the queues again and that conversation that you just had?
Yeah, so in the future, our future traffic volumes, and that's what we do in our traffic studies, what we do is we take existing data on the road, so we collect traffic counts, and then we also... What we do with that data is we grow it up at a compounded growth rate, annual compounded growth rate, and then we look at that future build year that we're studying in the TIA. So we grow that traffic up, and we add in any future developments as well. And then what we also do is we look at the traffic that the proposed development is adding in, and then we have to go back and try and mitigate the traffic to level of service D or better. And in this instance, at this, even with that traffic signal, we were still seeing queues here, excessive queues, and so that's when we realized that we needed to install, you know, that the turn lanes are necessary. And we just wanted to highlight just how, in the future, these queues would be excessive, but with this proposed development and the traffic signal with the turn lanes, the queues would be mitigated.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Bill, I think is going to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. Hard to believe, but over two years ago, this process started when I first contacted the Holder family and the Wood family about their property. Since then, we've had countless meetings, emails, calls of staff, officials, and neighbors alike. Each meeting and conversation resulted in a tweak, a minor adjustment, or even major changes in our plans in an effort to craft a plan that all stakeholders can live with. We've addressed as many of those concerns and issues as possible, and that's what we're presenting tonight. We did our homework. We listened. We listened to all stakeholders throughout the process to date. We dramatically decreased density multiple times since the start, cutting almost 24% of units as of this afternoon, and increased lot sizes substantially, while at the same time, never backing off of our initial commitments to major road improvements, the elevated quality of the homes, and the sanitary sewer upgrades that benefit the town. We've thoughtfully and carefully put a plan before you tonight that meets and exceeds the 2045 town plan for this area, indicate the benefits for the town, and raise the bar on quality that the Town of Clayton has not been accustomed to over the years. We appreciate your time tonight and your consideration, and we're all available for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, questions or comments? Mr. Sims?
Yes, could I get somebody to give me a breakdown of what's the units for the 6,000, 7,000, and 10,000?
All right, I knew somebody was going to ask this. So for, we have right, what we call a potential lot breakdown right now. We're not showing lot lines on the plan on purpose because once it's fully engineered, things may change and shift a little bit. But what we're looking at now, and what that 7,200 square foot average is based on, is 87 townhomes, 66 52-foot wide, 52-foot wide lots, pardon me, 157 62-foot wide lots, and 40 72-foot wide lots.
You said 47?
40 72-foot wide lots.
40, I'm sorry.
So those larger lots at 10,000 square feet, there would be 40 of those. And there may be more as we move through the site plan stage of this.
152 again, I'm sorry.
66.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And did you say 157 for the seven?
157 for the 62-foot wide lots.
Mr. Casey?
And what is that average lot size again, please?
7,200.
Okay, and that's exclusive of the townhomes?
Correct, it doesn't include townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions, and hopefully I'm not all over the place, but...
No, you're all right, go ahead.
Appreciate it. In one of the prior presentations, you had proposed 255 single-family lots, and now it's moved up to 280, is that correct? Was the single-family allotment again, I guess after the change tonight?
We've, we've always had significantly more single-family than townhomes.
I guess in the traffic study, it said 255 single-family?
It was 2.5, 2.55 dwelling units an acre was the density. Let's see.
I had down 263.
Yeah.
Single-family.
That's what I got.
Development.
Yeah, so when we started, we had 457 units, and there were, trying to go by memory, 190 townhomes, something like, yeah.
We reduced, I don't know, 116.
Or we cut out 116. So we, we had significantly more townhomes originally, and then we dropped it to the 25%. So we started with a total of 457 units, the very initial submittal, and now we're at 350.
Okay.
With that breakdown being 87 townhomes and 263 single-family dwellings.
For, for, yes, correct, for tonight, yes. Yep. With the density reduction of 24%.
Okay, thank you, and I'll go back in my notes in a minute and check on that. The other question I said, I had is, now around 40% of that's open space, how much is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so right now, we're saying it's a minimum of 40%, because I think it's slightly more than that, but we've been kind of moving some stuff around internally in our files. But we've always maintained a minimum of 40%.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Do you know how much of that 40% is technically unbuildable anyway?
Of that 40%, I would say maybe 60% of it is unbuildable, around 60%, because we've got streams and wetland and floodplain and all sorts of stuff towards the back. But I do want to note too that, let me go back. While we're talking about this, go to the plan. One thing we've tried to maintain with our proposal is maintaining the environmental areas as much as we can. Obviously, there are stream crossings to get to parts of the site to build homes, but we're limiting that to the two stream crossings that are being shown. You know, there are, there were opportunities for us to try to make some connections with those back parts, but we didn't want to just increase the number of stream crossings, which could, not only is it a permitting issue, but also we're just destroying the environmentally sensitive areas. So we tried to kind of, you know, be mindful of that when we were laying this out.
Okay, thank you. And I did find that in the trip generation, I guess at one point in time, there were 255 single-family lots and 210 single-family attached.
Okay, so I think that's when we made our initial submittal, and we had significantly more townhomes than we did. And then when we made the adjustment to bring the townhomes to a maximum of 25%, then by, by default, the single-family detached went up as we reduce the townhomes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next question, can you just, and I appreciate the conditions on crawl space are an elevated or raised foundation, but can you describe and kind of characterize what an elevated or raised foundation is versus a slab foundation?
Sure. I think the pictures actually illustrate it really well. I'm not sure how this, oh, there we go, it's magic. Okay, so the top homes, you can see there's a couple stairs going into the main entry. This is considered the elevated slab. So a regular slab would be, for example, down here, sorry, I'm kind of all over the place, down here, the front door, there's no steps into the front. But an elevated slab is when you have a couple steps in. It just, it dresses up the front of the house a little bit nicer and gives a little bit more interest as opposed to just a very flat home with a flat entrance.
Good, thank you. And lastly, my last, well, I assume it's my last question, is the pump station improvements, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that because I hear that y'all are making pump station improvements that are not just going to benefit you, but are going to benefit other development in that area, but then, you know, I'm not sure, I don't see a condition on that either. Are y'all saying you're willing to pay for regional pump station improvements, or you're willing to pay for your portion of a regional pump station improvement? Could you provide a little bit more clarity on that for me?
Sure, I'm going to have either Pat or Bill explain more, but we do have Condition 19, developer shall validate the adequate capacity in the downstream wastewater infrastructure, pump stations, and force main to accommodate the proposed flow for the project. If adequate downstream capacity is not available, the applicant will complete any pump station or force main improvements in coordination with the town staff to accommodate the proposed flow. So that's for us to evaluate our project, but we, we have had conversations about doing some, some upgrades to not only service some of the surrounding parcels that are either vacant or not developed right now into residential. And then also, that Glen Laurel III or GL III pump station is not doing very good, I think, so it would also be sized to replace that or take that one offline. So Bill or Pat, do you want to come up and explain that more? I'll let the expert civil engineer explain it a little better.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Patrick Barbo. I'm a licensed civil engineer. I work for the Timmons Group. I'm senior project manager there. So our wastewater group has done analysis and has met with Joshua probably a year ago, I think. And what we've looked at is, we'll have a regional pump station on our site backed up towards the Neuse River, so it's the lowest point of the site. It'll be sized for the drainage area, for adjacent properties. Our wastewater group also did an analysis, and preliminarily, we haven't gotten to, you know, survey and everything, but we know we can at least take Glen Laurel Pump Station III offline, and you can gravity feed from where that pump station is to our regional center. There is, there is one property between Glen Laurel and our site, an easement would have to be acquired to get the gravity sewer to go across that property, reach our pump station in the future. We'll install about 13,000 linear feet of forest main. We will not go to the Glen Laurel pump stations, their infrastructure just won't support their site and our site. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll go down Vincent Road toward Glen Laurel Road, hang a right, and go up to Summerlin subdivision and tie into that pump station. The upgrades, the financial difference between designing our pump station for our site and the drainage area versus also including Glen Laurel Pump Station III is probably a half million dollar difference that the developer will be paying for to, to take Glen Laurel Pump Station III offline.
Okay, thank you. And you, just a clarification, you said there is a potential easement requirement if this were to come to fruition?
An easement will be required. I do not know if there's been contact with that property owner or not. I just know it's feasible from a gravity point, like the total works, but you will have to get an easement on that property.
Understood, thank you.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, so as part of the condition, are you willing to upsize the gravity sewer where it ties in if needed?
More ties in, it'd be a little more specific.
Wherever you end up tying it in?
To Summerlin?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If it's required, we will. We'll have to do a full pump station analysis of the Summerlin pump station also to prove there's capacity at that pump station to handle our site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Can I get the, the traffic young lady back up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get me the slide that was showing the, the entrance, just the widening?
Which, which entrance?
I want to look, well, that one's fine. So currently, do you know, and if you don't, that's fine, but how wide is that road right over in there right now?
The road should be either, the road should be at least 20 feet wide.
And you're proposing in here to widen it to what?
So we would be adding the, here, let me zoom in here. So we would be at the entrance, all of those lanes would be 12 feet wide, so we're...
What now, sorry?
All of those lanes would be 12 feet wide, so, quick math, 12 times 3, plus a little bit of taper, or plus a little bit of, you know, the pavement markings. So it would be 30, 36, yes. Nothing like math, and everyone's looking at you.
No, you're on the spot, we're on the mic and everything, so I understand. So for, what's the length, for how long?
So as you can see, what we are proposing, so what we proposed is 100-foot full-width storage with the NC DOT guidelines, with 100 feet full with storage, you have to add on an additional 50 feet. So a total of 150 feet storage, and then there's a 300-foot transition taper. And then because it's a left turn lane and we're widening in the center of the road and not just on one side, we have to, here, can I use this? Yeah, there we go. So this is what I'm talking about here, that's that 300-foot transition taper. And then because it's a left turn lane into this side of the road, this also has to be widened to make sure that those through lanes are going, you know, those through lanes don't all of a sudden have a jog.
Right.
So that is also a 300-foot on that side. So in total, 600 feet of road that would be impacting.
So that's on that one now, so with the second one, is that about the same, or is that more or less?
Yes, the second one is about the same. It is the same storage length, and it's also a single left turn lane.
As far as the footage, it's about, it's about 600?
Yes, yes, 300 transition on each side.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Follow-up question about the traffic as well. Okay, with what you've shown us, would this be presented by the development, or would the town have to do something with this road?
So the development would be installing these, is that what you're asking? Yes.
And do you have a estimate on total investment for all of the road improvements that you all are proposing to take care of? Total value, estimated value?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely over a million dollars. Oh, yeah, Bill, can...
We, we have done some estimates on the road improvements just to, not in front of, on our frontage improvements, but just the improvements at the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road is at least a million dollars.
Okay.
That's today's costs, and we're, you know, probably, you know, assuming we move forward, then we're 12, at least, months more of site plan, construction drawings, and then break ground, so you're looking at 18 months. So whatever the costs are at that, at that point, they've never gone down, so.
Correct, yes, okay, so minimum one million dollars, thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
So just to clarify for me, when we're talking about these road improvements, because again, this is not the norm for a development to make these improvements before anybody moves into a subdivision and have these costs up front, that's a little staggering to me. So I just want to clarify for myself that what you are proposing for these improvements along this road with the storage capacity is you're talking about making these improvements before you have one person move into that subdivision, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, I have a question, it's not regarding traffic. I know, I recall that this is within the water supply watershed, and I wondered if off the top of your head, or maybe it's somewhere in the narrative, what percent impervious the project is at?
I don't believe it's in the narrative. I don't know as if we know that right now, because there's, we don't, there's no builder, so we don't know really what houses are going to be on each lot. But I can tell you, with 40% minimum open space and yard space, I mean, it's, it's not going to be, it can't be like 50 or 60%, it's going to still be relatively low in comparison because of all the open space we have. I just don't have that particular figure in front of me.
Right, and I'm not extremely well-versed on those particular regulations, but I do know it does affect the setback requirements for the waterways, and it's particular waterways. And I think, you know, we just noticed, looking through the, the master plan, that the setbacks look like they're currently at 50 feet, and so that was just kind of a number I was interested in, but I understand if you don't have it. On the question of open space, so if we're around 40%, and we're talking about a project of 146 acres, that leaves about 58 acres as open space? If I did my math correct?
Yeah, that's, when I was doing it, it was between like 58 and 60. Again, if that's a minimum, it likely may be slightly more than that, but yeah, we're rolling with the minimum just because it's not fully engineered.
Great, and so building off of Councilmember Casey's previous question, so I had just assumed that of that 40%, none of that was buildable, but it sounds like you're saying some of that is actually buildable.
Yeah, so I pulled this back up, I'm going to use this fancy little pointer again. There we go. So our main amenity is going to be here, there's nothing environmentally sensitive that we need to avoid in this area. There's a pond with a buffer back here, but we're staying clear of that. So, you know, this here is buildable, but, and we do have some areas where there'd be a stormwater pond, for example, there might be a stormwater pond. Here, we don't have any stream buffer, we're showing kind of just a basic area here, but this, that's a stream buffer, here's a stream buffer back here, there's wetland and floodplain back here. So a significant amount of that 40% is still essentially untouchable. And we don't plan on like coming in with extra stream crossings or anything with site plan. You know, it's, we're limiting it for trying to be sensitive to the environmentally sensitive areas.
Okay, I appreciate that. I was getting at that point just because I know that in conversations with people in town and among council, we have talked about open space subdivisions and, and you're, you know, you had mentioned before trying to kind of cluster the development to preserve these other areas. And I, and I think that's great. I think really, though, the goal of an open space subdivision is more to allow buildable area to not be constructed on, because then you're really, you're getting like a bigger bang for your buck. But anyway, that's why I kind of wanted to get to that point of if you were going above and beyond to kind of preserve buildable land and keep that as open space, then that's, that's an additional benefit I just kind of wanted to understand. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else?
One quick follow-up that I forgot to mention is, so the BERM schedule for, and if you want to go back to that picture. Yes, yep.
Sorry, there we go.
So is the schedule for this improvement the same as for the road improvements? Is that, tell me what the schedule is for this?
So the road improvements would be first, they, you build the road, and then once the road is built, then the BERM would be behind it. So in terms of like a timing mechanism for this, we have not discussed one, but usually when we do these for other projects, we're talking about installing, designing and installing the BERM before people move in, I mean...
before people move in. I mean, homes might have, construction may have started, but it's not like all the units we build and then we build the BERM. Because the BERM is helping to screen the inside from the outside and the outside from the in.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so this deal is noted as a public hearing, and I know we had a gentleman who wished to speak earlier. I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor to come and express your concerns. If there are others, please feel free to step forward and state your name and share your concerns. But due to the time factor, if your concern already gets mentioned, because everything that you say will be included in the record taken by the clerk. So if your concern is already mentioned, if you would leave that out and just let's keep to what is pertinent that hasn't already been expressed, I would really appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Gary Ogil, 2101 Hidden Valley Drive. The proposal that's before you this evening is very serious. Please take it seriously. Your decision tonight will affect the lives of hundreds of people every day into the future. The traffic that they're talking about, most of what I've seen is Glen Laurel Road and the exception of the entrance into the new subdivision. I've not really seen anything where they're addressing Vincent Road itself. Vincent Road is a narrow, curvy road that has major problems already. The edges of the road are falling apart. It's full of potholes. And coming up to Glen Laurel Road, currently the traffic backs up at peak times of day for hundreds of yards. And I've not seen any turn lanes or anything that's really going to make a difference. Even the turn lane on Glen Laurel, that's not going to affect the number of cars that are coming through that intersection every day. They're just going to be lined up, waiting on the light to turn green or red. So I don't really see how that's going to make this any better. They're talking about building the pump station. Please don't let this sway your decision. I mean, I know it's needed, but once all this is done, Town of Clayton is going to be having to maintain these pump stations and keep Glen Laurel pumping as well. And the proposal is they're going to connect to a Johnston County water line that is an 8-inch water line. I don't see how an 8-inch water line is going to be able to serve its current users and then add almost 400 more units onto that. And it just seems like that is overworking the water system in that area. I don't understand how that is possible, that it could keep up with that kind of growth and density. Along with the overcrowding of the schools and the road maintenance, all that's going to be left for someone else to deal with. Johnston County, Town of Clayton, whoever. That's going to be just left for us to have to deal with on a daily basis. One thing I've not heard anybody really mention, the water runoff. Has anyone conducted a hydrological survey report to get the runoff flow rate for before this construction versus after this construction? I live in Hidden Valley. We are adjacent to this subdivision. Our streets are private. We're not maintained by Johnston County or the North Carolina. We maintain our streets out of our pockets. All of the runoff from the existing pond and the two waterways that are beside that pond flow onto my property. Then it flows through one 4-foot culvert under Hidden Valley Drive. All it's going to take is one gigantic storm, and if the excessive runoff from this new construction has the potential to wash out Hidden Valley Drive, then we are stuck with a huge bill to repair, to replace our street. And also during the construction, if one big storm like we had the other night, the back of my property is going to be covered in mud forever. So I don't see any reason why this should be rezoned or annexed. It could be developed under Johnston County's current standards. Only people that tend to benefit from this, and keep in mind, you received a survey, not a survey, I'm sorry, petition of over 500 signatures that do not want to see this kind of growth in this area. Not yet, it's too soon. The only people that tend to, that are supporting this are the ones that are going to profit from it. They don't live here. They don't live on that street. They don't drive those streets on a daily basis. It does not affect them. They don't care about what it does to us. They're just looking for the development and the money. I know growth is going to happen, but this area is not ready for this kind of density and this kind of growth at this time. It needs to be slowed down just a little bit. So I'm just asking that you please do what is right for your citizens and vote no for this annexation and rezoning.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for your words. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, my name is Scott Council. I live at 1213 Neuse Ridge Drive. So I heard about this a little bit late. Came into the November meeting. Pretty interested in what the developer had to say, but came back with it understanding that this developer is not being completely genuine with us. One of the things in their proposal was that these attached multifamily homes or single-family homes attached were being in keeping with the area. But if you look at the other neighborhoods adjacent, there are no townhomes. They don't exist in that area. And it was disingenuous for them to say that these are in keeping with the zoning and in keeping with the area when they had to hide them in the middle of the property so nobody could see them. And it even says that on page seven of their proposal, right? So I'm really, you know, disappointed in an engineering firm and a development that would do that, try to hide something. Third thing, or the second thing is Vincent Road has a lot of elevation changes. I don't know if you've ever driven that road. If you have, you know. You come around blind corners, come over blind hills. My daughter was in an accident on that road because of the development at Sierra Heights and the people trying to turn in and out of that area, right? So there's very poor visibility on that road. That road is not adequate for the number of cars, the 2,400 trips that are going to come out of that neighborhood, you know, on that stretch of road. So I'm really disappointed that, you know, we would even consider adding that kind of danger to our roadways. And lastly, you know, I think our town is quaint. It's lovely. I moved here for a reason. I don't want to have to move away and find someplace that has the charm. Don't let a developer take it away. And Ms. Anderson, you were surprised about the amount of money that the DOT or the roadway changes were going to take? You got to think this development's a $150 million development for the developer, right? That's the value of the homes that are in there. It's $150 million. He takes one of those million, puts it on your roads, and that's it. Thank you all for your time, and please vote no.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council, my name is John Scarp, once again, and I live at 1304 Neuse Ridge Drive in Clayton. I have a couple of comments that I don't think have actually been fully explored. First of all, let's talk turkey here. This development is inconsistent with the rural character of the neighborhood around it. It just is. It's a matter of fact. It's too dense. The lot sizes are way too small. And by as much of a factor as 50%, there are no townhouses anywhere near this, nor should there be. Vincent Road is, as it's been described, a backwards country road. That's the way it has been for decades. If we add this development here, we're going to change the character of this quaint country road, and we're going to turn it into a major thoroughfare, which it's not capable of for the reasons that have already been addressed by others. This project isn't even recommended by staff. The staff agrees that this is, and it remains inconsistent with the 2045 growth plan. You know that there's a lot of us who feel this way. You've received the petition. The queues that they're talking about, that they're showing us on Glen Laurel Road, have nothing to do with Vincent Road. And if you drive down Vincent Road and you'll see what we're talking about, there's a school there. And you know, I've heard at a previous meeting, some members say that we can't take into consideration schools. Yeah, you can. You should. You must. You've got to take into consideration the entire character of the neighborhood and what benefits everybody. It doesn't benefit everybody to have Vincent Road have so many additional vehicles on it when you've got schoolchildren trying to cross that street and there's not even a school crossing guard there? There's not a light. There's nothing to protect them. The traffic regulations require 25 mile per hour speed limit, and it's constantly violated. Everybody violates it. It's terrible. I don't think we can address the traffic, you know, speed. We're not going to be able to do that. We never have. But you add another 1,000 cars or 2,000 cars a day, and you just exacerbate the problem. So what I'd like to say is that there are no improvements that they can make to Vincent Road, practically speaking, which will justify the amount of additional traffic that's going to be there. The density is crazy. The townhouses are out of character. Please say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brent Wood, 230 Summit Street. Obviously, I'm on the, I am, I think about this a little differently, obviously. But Vincent Road is Vincent Road. It's been the same way for the last 60 years. Glen Laurel was a, is the same road it is now. We've improved the pavement once or twice, but the road is pretty much the same as it was. It dips at the bottom. The creek runs through. As far as valuation of runoff and things like that, there's an expectation that we all should have that the builder does what is supposed to happen. You're supposed to go and have the evaluations and do it properly. If you don't do it properly, the county and the state should come after and make the adjustments. But at the same time, I believe that they will. They've more than shown through the whole process. Unfortunately, I've had to sit through several of these, and we sat with the committee board, and, I mean, the approval board. They went through it. They said, this isn't going to happen. You're going to have to go back and make adjustments and real, real change. They came back and made real changes from a, just a cost factor. Cost does matter, by the way. And then came back for a second. They made more concessions and they evaluated it. Clayton's going to grow. Clayton's going to, whether you, whether you make this decision or not, it's going to grow. And it's going to run over, and what's going to happen is this side in Clayton's, and you've done a great job, especially you've been around probably longer than the rest of them as far as on the board. But we saw Glen Laurel grow. We saw the difference it made there. We've seen Nova Nordus. We've seen these people come in on the other side and advance the area. I think when you follow the rules and the rules meet your needs, then I think at the same time, it is personal. I understand that, and I'm not trying to push back on those things for folks. But what I'm saying is that you have rules and standards. I feel like they've met and worked over in a lot of areas, and there is benefit to the town. There's benefit long-term, just like Glen Laurel. Yeah, because trust me, I know a lot of people didn't like it at first, but the whole point was it grew and then the next development. And the background of the town has grown with it, and you've done a really good job on development. But I live at Summit Street, which is at the back door of the townhomes you approved three and a half years ago out behind the Lacina and stuff right there, the emergency gate. It's at my driveway. I did not like it, but I understand the growth. You can't avoid it. So we're better off trying to plan forward and being part of that change and controlling the change versus someone else controlling the narrative. Because if you're not controlling it or at least trying to control that, then it's going to come from the other side. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, Town Council, my name is Beth Crater. I live at 2101 Hidden Valley Drive. Been part of this process since the very beginning, and with the Zoom meetings with Mr. Ogil and through the Town Council meetings, the zoning, planning, everything. The developer has not really addressed our concerns. Every time we turn around, it is somebody else is going to fix the problem. The school's the problem. The traffic's the problem. They're throwing carrots out for a pump station, a lane on Glen Laurel, like it was said earlier. Vincent Road backs up past the school at times. You can't get in and get out. I've been stuck in traffic where an emergency vehicle could not even get down that road and sat there for 35 minutes. That's a real issue. There are five, almost 600 people that signed that petition that said no. And why? Because it affects our quality of life. It affects where we live. These people don't live there. That man has insulted us by commenting, making nasty comments about where we live, our quality of life, our homes that we live in, and the fact that we've worked hard to pay for our homes. We like the area. We're not out to make money. We just say, leave this to Johnston County. Leave it to their standards. There's a reason they didn't do that. This is too dense for this area. We are not Tuscany. We are not Percy Flowers Plantation or Flowers Plantation. We are not some of these other areas. We are rural. This area was not designed, was not in your 2045 plan. But if you annex it in, then you make it part of your 2045 plan. It was never intended to be that. Leave it the way it is. Agricultural, residential. Leave it where it's, it will match the area. No townhomes, 1-acre lots. We're not saying it, don't develop it. We're just saying, don't annex it. Thank you.
Hi, Betty Fagan. You know, I'm 200 Neuse Ridge Drive. First, I want to address the children. I stand before you, not just as Betty Fagan, but I stand before you as a bubby. I'm a bubby from New York that moved here with a six-year-old and a four-year-old granddaughters. We came here for them to get away from New York, to get away from the walls, to get away from the traffic, to get away from the people that don't say hi to you all the time, to get away from all the crazy you're making crazy. Don't let the crazy come here. It's beautiful here. It's a wonderful place to be. We left our family on Long Island to come here to be with all of you. Don't let this happen to them. The school is a fabulous school they're going to, and it's going to change. It's going to get overloaded. You want them in pods? I mean, you want them in a small school where all the teachers are together and they're all able to team under one roof? They're going to end up split. My granddaughter has 19 friends in her first grade class. It's not going to stay 19. And those teachers, they're fabulous individuals, just like all of us in this room tonight. I don't know about the builders. I'm not involved in this. I don't know about the lawyers. I don't want to know about any of that. I want to know about my granddaughters. And I know Josh, because we happen to be in Glen Laurel, and we're either number one or number two substation. It's not easy having a substation behind our home, but the town helps us, and they're there for us when there's an issue. There's already a strain there. We don't need any more strains. We don't need the water damaged. We don't need the land damaged. It's a beautiful, beautiful town. All I ask is that you keep it that way. It's so, so simple. I'd say no to this. Thank you for listening. It was nice meeting all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Vincent. I live at 2201 Jack Road, Clayton. My family owns a tract adjacent to Glen Laurel that is in between the proposed development. And we are very concerned at this point. They've just said they would need some of our property for an easement or what have you. Our family has owned this tract for over a Our family has owned this tract for over 100 years. We make our living farm in that tract of land. And we would request that the council deny this motion to help our family be subject to any kind of forced easements or anything in that way, because we currently do have a farm on that property and we wish to keep it a farm. And we request council to deny it.
I'm Cynthia Calibro and I live at 1313 Newt Ridge Drive. I have a question and an offer to you. My question is, with all the addition of those homes, how many extra policemen and firemen is the city planning on hiring to take care of all the people in those homes? And my offer to you is, I live on the corner of Glen Vincent and Newt Ridge. And I would invite you to come and sit on my deck in the evening and listen to the cars speeding by. It wakes people up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask if you are here this evening and you came to express your opposition to this. Would you please raise your hand so council can get a feeling? All right. First of all, I want to thank you so much for attending this meeting. I want to thank you for all the time and the input that you have put into it. It's very clear that you love where you're at. And it's also very clear that we all love Clayton, North Carolina, and for that, I'm extremely appreciative. But I didn't want you to come and feel like your voice couldn't be heard. But obviously, we've been at this a really long time. And I don't want to not allow someone to be able to speak what they want to speak. But more importantly, I want you to be able to show council while you're here, and therefore I ask for the raise of hands. So with that, I thank you, and I will now close the public hearing and I will turn it over to the council for their deliberation. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Can I respond to some of the comments that some of the neighbors?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll be brief. I do want to thank all the neighbors for coming out. A lot of the same folks came and have spoken at the last two planning board meetings. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. With the roadway improvements, we have a TIA that DOT reviewed and approved. They made, you know, recommendations on that we have to do. So we're not just making up the road improvements. DOT, they own those roads. They say what can and cannot happen. So all the road improvements were DOT approved. That's what they said we need to do. With regard to the drainage and the Hidden Valley neighborhood, you know, we've offered to that gentleman and anybody in that neighborhood, really, we'll go and we'll look at the situation before any development happens and see. If there's anything we could do on our side to make the situation better, we will. But we do have to do stormwater ponds that are regulated by the state to detain and treat stormwater. It's not like the water is just going to flow willingly wherever. We will have stormwater ponds. We've kind of shown areas reserved for those on the plan. But, you know, we do have to do them as part of our plan at site plan. So again, we do have to do that. We're not just letting the water run off wherever. A neighbor said that he thought that we were being disingenuous with our proposal. The townhomes in the middle were done by design. A lot of neighborhoods you drive around in other places, the townhomes are in front and the density gets less as you go back. We understand the sensitivity of townhomes, but we understand that the town and the comp plan talks about mix of housing. So we thought it was important to keep the mix of housing, but put it in an area where we're protecting it from the surrounding properties. So we're not just putting it at the road. We're not putting it immediately adjacent to another property. So I don't think we were being disingenuous. That was a design decision based on feedback we've gotten from neighbors and from other, you know, planning board members and other folks that have commented on our project. With regard to architecture, it will be similar to surrounding homes. It's obviously there's no townhomes that are right next to ours, but in terms of materials, the hardy plank type siding and the stone or the brick, that's, you know, when we talk about doing that type of design, the townhomes will also have that included. And the last thing, the easement on the adjacent property for any pump station upgrade or anything like that, that would only be when that law is developed. We're not going to put an easement through somebody's property. First of all, we can't. You can't just put an easement through somebody's property. You'd have to buy it. But that's not going to happen until that piece of property, if it ever is developed, then an easement will go through to help service that lot with the pump station. So I just wanted to make sure those things were clarified. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. So 20 years sitting in this seat and... I should try to get one more road improvement out of you before I do this, but no, I'm just kidding. Yes, sir, please.
Okay. So in regards to the stormwater runoff that Mr. Ogilvy is worried about, and rightly so, there's certain state regulations that we have to adhere to extremely tightly. And this is what we've done in the past. This is not a new concern. But we'd be willing to do double silt fencing along that entire eastern boundary of disturbed property. So if that helps, we'd be willing to commit to that also.
Thank you. It's important to be a good neighbor. 20 years I've been sitting in this seat, honored every year. The mayor has yet to be able to vote. The mayor at the town of Clayton votes in the event of a tie. And in 20 years, I have not had a tie and I've never been able to vote on a decision. The mayor's role is to really act as a conduit between real everyday people and local government. And, you know, I have sat here with both ears and listened to you express your concerns, not from a judgmental perspective, but from open, honest, good old, real everyday people perspective. And one thing that I want you and those watching on the camera to know that for the first time in 20 years, we have never had a developer to invest a million dollars in road improvements, ever. And I'm not saying that that should give him a free pass to everything, but I want you to know that when I speak of bringing your A-game to Clayton as a developer, this is a concept that I'm talking about, because the state of North Carolina, you know, what's going on in our region on our country roads is not just right here. It's all over the state of North Carolina. State of North Carolina, eighth fastest growing in the 48 states. They don't have the money to expand these roads in the higher growth areas. And they're certainly not going to go up on your taxes just to make sure that all of these country roads, you know, are maintained. So I'm respectful of that, but it's amazing to know that developers are understanding if you're going to come here and you're going to develop here and you're going to create profit from here, that you need to do all you can to help increase the safety of those kids and our senior citizens that are on these roads. And to have somebody to offer this type of money is the first time I've ever heard of anything that in 20 years being the mayor. Second of all, I just want to address the school issue. And I have been quoted, I have quoted, I have spoken poorly about that topic in the past. I'm going to, you know, manage my words better with this conversation. I would just simply like to say that obviously, we don't do anything to purposefully be a detriment to any school in the town of Clayton. But I also want to say in all fairness to the town of Clayton that never once have I or this council or our management team with the town of Clayton ever received a letter from Johnson County Schools that said, please slow down your growth. And we have tried to engage with Johnson County Schools and we're just not there, you know? And our county commissioners, so our Johnson County Schools, you know, they govern our schools. But our Johnson County Commissioners are the ones who fund our public school system in Johnson County. And they are the ones who know that we're running behind, I think most recently I heard the chairman say, we're behind like six schools based on what's been going on in Johnson County. And that isn't just on the western side with Clayton, but it's the county as a whole. So, you know, there's things that we all have to have some awareness created on. And I just wanted to really share that, that it's unprecedented to have a developer want to do these type of road improvements. Nobody's ever done that before, ever, in 20 years. It's impressive. And nobody wants to do anything that's detrimental to schools or schoolchildren. But again, never one word from Johnson County Public School to say what you're doing in Clayton is ruining our school system. So I just wanted to put that out there for the record and thank you for listening to my opinion and my assessment on what's taking place. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. I've been really, really torn on this one. I have not been on for 20 years, but in the two years that I have been on, I have not seen a developer go to this extent. You're talking about 457 units all the way down to, what was it, 350? That is significant. And to make these changes along with a 600 feet of road as far as looking to widen to develop and take responsibility as far as with the lights and the intersection is to me phenomenal. I'm torn because at the same time, I do have some issues as far as the characteristics of that area out there. And some of the things that they're looking at, Billy, as far as the townhomes, I have some issues with that. But let me say this, and I'm going to look directly out there to every citizen that wrote a letter, every citizen that sent an email, every citizen that came here this evening and the 500 that did the petition. A majority of those, and you all some that spoke this evening, and the mayor alluded to it, talked about the schools, your concerns and how bad it is on the roads, okay? I should see at the next county commissioner's meeting, if you're really concerned about those students and the overcrowding, I should see a majority of you there. I watch those meetings. I never hear anything about the overcrowding. DOT should be getting letters and petitions left or right to improve that road since Vincent Road is so unsafe and that. I'm not denying it at all. I'm not saying any of these accusations that you're saying are not true. But it's amazing to me that a lot that's getting thrown here tonight is not really going to the people and the places that are really responsible. Could it be that the actuality is that we really don't want anybody else to move next to us? And I'm fine with that. Again, if you're really concerned, I would see you at one of those particular meetings. I have, again, concerns with the characteristics of that whole area, the townhomes. I'm really torn. I want to hear the comments from my other council members. Again, I want to applaud you all for the improvement and the things that you have looked to do. I think, and I agree with the mayor, are phenomenal compared to what we have seen and had come before us in the past.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Casey?
I do want to make a few comments. I do want to say I'm pleased with the developer's willingness to listen and try to make concessions for this project. Even if I have concerns about the specific project, I do favor the attitudes and the effort of our team. I would hope as we continue to push for quality development in this community, we'd have similar experiences with other developers. Also appreciate the feedback from the community. Please note that I hear your concerns. We in council have to walk a delicate line approving or denying projects and mitigating impacts that are within our control with development projects. And we have to do all of that and try to be, fear of being sued. So it's not an easy, easy task. A few things to note for me on this. I know that we're talking about the density and how it may be consistent with the comp plan. You know, we have our comp plan and we also have zoning categories. Our comp plan is the way we outline the general growth and development. For me, there's also a lot of flexibility and ambiguity of our comp plan because it paints a broad brush in the community. One thing I always struggle with is the density in our comp plan. I understand the applicant's angle by taking our low density category and doing that less than three units per acre. But when I hear density, you know, an acre is 43,560 square feet. You divide that by three, you got 14,000 square foot lots. I know that's oversimplistic and that's why I don't write the comp plan in that regard, because this project's a 7,200 square foot lots are the average. You know, so then I go back and I look at, you know, the surrounding area, what it's zoned, if it would be brought in to our ETJ and we would categorize it, how we would categorize it. And, you know, that basically looking at our zoning categories. And the least dense is agricultural rural and the next one is residential estate. I didn't know that the adjacent property was an actually working farm. That was surprising to me. That makes me, you know, consider that agricultural rural a more applicable zoning category. But then we also have the residential estate category as well. And in those situations, even if you take the more dense of those residential estate, the 25,000 square foot lots are the minimum. If you do a open space zoning designation, you're allowed to do 12,000 square foot lots by right. So I guess that gets me to the point where I'm struggling relating to the lot size as well as with the townhomes. You know, if you're talking about an average of 7,200 square feet, single family detached homes that does not even include the townhomes, you know, that doesn't fit the character of that community and that neighborhood, that area. Like I said, there's a lot of things I like about this project. I definitely appreciate the developer's willingness and efforts. If this were closer to our downtown core, this would be a slam dunk for me. Unfortunately, it's not. I know those obviously improvements are appreciated and, you know, that's something the developer's willing to do. But some of those improvements, let's be honest, are partly because of the development itself. So if you were to base this off, you know, our conditional zoning requirements, it clearly does not meet, as our staff has pointed out, number two, the compatibility of the surrounding area. I appreciate the developer showing a map, but actually, to me, that map made it even more clear it wasn't compatible because there wasn't nothing even close to being adjacent to the surrounding area. So if we approve that density here, we open ourselves up to other equal density in that same area. If the townhomes, to Mr. Sims' point, get built, does that mean now townhomes are compatible with that surrounding area? I would think we would be put in a tough situation to say yes, they were in the future. So, I mean, I'm sorry, I got a lot of notes. So, you know, for me, I just, I struggle with this. You know, I go to the staff's recommendation. This project's obviously drawn a lot of attention from the community. And so, you know, to me, I would push towards denial of this project and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I'll just say I echo basically everything that's been set up here. I'm really glad you touched on schools. I was going to say a lot of the same. It's just irresponsible to base a residential building application in the town of Clayton on school systems. And just by nature, school systems are reactive. They don't build them and then you come. They build them in response to housing and development. So that is an example of, you know, not wanting to put the cart in front of the horse. Other topics have come up. I agree with Mr. Sims on traffic, Vincent Road. By denying this application, it's not going to help you on Vincent Road. In fact, you can make an argument that approving this application funds a major improvement that's needed. And that's okay. We can agree to disagree. There's multiple ways to look at that. It didn't come up here tonight, but we got a lot of emails about wildlife and wildlife concerns and preserving area for wildlife. And I'm very sympathetic to that. I totally understand that. But it's really, you can't make someone else keep their land undeveloped so that we can drive by and enjoy the beauty of it. That's not fair. All of the land that our houses was built on used to be habitat for something. So that's just really inconsistent. And I just wanted to point out my logic on that as well. Several of the emails addressed... Several of the emails addressed water and wastewater capacity as well. Again, I don't see either of those as valid reasons for denying this permit or this application. Those are complex issues that are being addressed at the municipal and the county level. And without taking up a bunch of time and getting into that, I just wanted to offer up to anybody that if you have questions about that, because I know personally, it's really kind of scary and frustrating when we go on water restrictions, and, but if you have questions about that, I'm happy to take your call or your email and put you in touch with someone who can answer that for you. But those are not considerations that I would factor in here. And then last but not least, just echoing what Mr. Casey and Councilmember Sims have said as well, what it really boils down to me, and again, this is very hard, this has been, the developer has made just phenomenal compromises here. But when I look at the number of townhomes and lots under 7,000 square feet, total 40% of the unit, that's just too high, in my opinion. And so what I'm doing there, I'm leaning on the second inconsistency statement that staff had mentioned, that's in the staff report. I'm really grateful to the time and the professionalism of this team that we've worked with, but that inconsistency for me is why I'm also leaning toward, you know, voting a no on this, and that's the only reason. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I would just, I'm not gonna be redundant and talk about some of the things that have already been said. I totally understand the concerns that have been expressed here. I have some of those myself. What has been paramount to me in this decision, and it's been a difficult, it's a difficult decision at best. I do agree with what's been said here about the developer. You can agree or disagree with that, but I've lived here a long time. I've watched council meetings. I've been involved, and I agree with the mayor and councilman Sims, councilman Casey and councilwoman Merritt, that this team has been as responsive as any team I've seen. That is impressive to me. That doesn't just happen. People, I understand the concerns about coming in here and making money. Well, people have a right to make money. They have a right to develop their own private land to sell, to be developed. An issue for me is safety. These changes and additions they're making to these intersections are way over what is required. It is gonna give, and we read the emails, we've all, we've all seen the emails, we all received them, and the statements that I saw over and over again were the roads are at overcapacity. It is, it is a massive issue. Well, if this land goes to the county to be developed with a lesser density, the requirements for those intersections and those turn lanes and those storage reservoir, whatever you wanna call it, capacity at that intersection probably are not gonna be on the table. This product, even though it's denser, is going to put in major road improvements that are going to make a difference at that intersection in holding traffic off this two-lane, it's gonna slow people down. Safety is, is, has become paramount to me in making this decision and these road improvements. Again, I understand what everybody's saying and what everybody's concerns are, but I would like to applaud you for listening and paying attention to what the requirements and the expectations of this council are, and your responses back every time you've been met with, with these concerns. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes. I just want to say I appreciate all the presentations on tonight and the feedback, especially from the developers. I do appreciate your comments and the community. You've been heard. I just want you to know that we have definitely read your comments, all of those emails got our attention as well. So I just want to let you know that, and even now, I am for, for development and for growth. I want you to know that. But maybe this situation, maybe the location and timing, maybe better suited for another time outside of our particular scope. So without repeating everything anybody else has said, I'm in favor of denying it at this time.
All right. Ms. Archer?
I have one follow-up question, just for the development team, given the discussion we've had here tonight, including the comments you've just heard. Is there any sense in continuing this to give you another opportunity to look at density numbers or lot sizes, or is this something that, you know, you feel like we've kind of reached a natural conclusion? I just wanted to throw that out there.
There's no short-term answer on that.
Can we continue all of these issues? And we'll give it, we'll give it a closer look, you know, make these design changes off the, off the hook. So we would ask if we can continue, what is it, A, B, and G? Thank you, Mayor.
So you would like to request a continuance of, on tonight's agenda, item 6A, 6B, and 6G. You're asking for a continuance instead of a vote?
Yeah.
Mayor, my suggestion would be continue it to a date certain.
So is a 30-day, is 30 days long enough?
I think that will work for our schedule and our agenda. We got a plenty to work on while we let you figure out what your next move would like to be, so, Ms. Archer?
Just for clarification to the town attorney, would you prefer that we say 60 days or to the March 18th?
I'd prefer you pick a meeting date.
Okay. So approximately 60 days would be the March 18th, 2024 council meeting.
That's what the institute recommends, and I know you're thinking that, a date-specific.
Yes. So that would, so we would postpone a decision until March the 18th, 2024, meeting with a notation that the public hearing has been held and been closed. So the discussion would simply be for the council to ask questions of any changes or recommendations that a developer might have. It would not have, it would not be a moment of, it would be a continuation of public hearing.
Are we gonna, are we gonna be, I think it would be better if we could offer, if there's a chance to maybe offer some change or amendment. You know what I mean? And we can't do that unless we just continue the hearing and leave it open very well. Can you hear me?
No. I was, I was preferring that we continue the hearings and leave them open so that if there are changes, we can come back with the changes and can present them to the board. Because otherwise, we just are continuing the thought. I don't know what, these are expensive things, and, but that way, we could come back with a plan that might sway members who are not swayed.
I think in the past, Mayor, I remember a recent example of this, and the scope of the discussion at the continuation meeting was limited strictly to the changes. And I think that's what you're suggesting, and I think that's what the council has done in the past.
Okay. Then that's the road we'll take. Thank you. So do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a motion to continue.
And then can I ask a question about that? Can we, can my motion bundle the conditional rezoning and the two annexations?
Absolutely.
Okay. And can I just say agenda items A, B, and G, or do I? Looking for the path of least resistance here. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to continue items 6A, 6B, and 6G to the March 18th, 2024 council meeting.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for a continuation of those items 6A, B, and G on tonight's agenda until the March 18th, 2024 meeting. Do I have, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is gonna be the capital project budget ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're asking council to adopt the 2024 Geo Bonds Capital Project Ordinance, which gives us the budgetary authorization to undertake major improvements in addition to add additional amenities at Clayton Community Park. The remaining $4.5 million general obligation bonds will be sold next Tuesday, January 23rd.
That's awesome. Are there any questions or comments for staff as it pertains to the capital project budget ordinance? Mr. Casey?
I'd like to make a motion to adoption ordinance 2024-01-09.
That's good.
Boy, y'all have had too much candy. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance 2024-01-09. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, now I'm gonna call for a 15-minute recess. I just want y'all to know, I think y'all did a great job.
Thank you.
I really did. I really do.
I would say even so.
By your thing?
Put in July sixteen.
We're not going to play this yet. Is that where mine was? Am I next? I think I'm next here. Am I not next? Okay.
It's why the mind queued up, so I can say.
Yep, I was gonna say, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna burn through some of this stuff. Hey, Robert.
I don't like this. All right, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Up next is staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Rich Capola, Town Manager. Tonight, we are doing, we got this, this is our third year in a row now, doing a mid-year budget report to the council to give you a snapshot, kind of update and snapshot of where we're at with the fiscal year twenty four budget. So first slide I'm going to show you here is our fund balance on the general fund. You may recall seeing this reported to you multiple times throughout the year, but mostly during this time and at the fund, excuse me, at the annual budget creation, because this really tells the story of available funds that the council may have the discretion to be able to utilize for things that have come up throughout the year or to be able to prioritize for what will become FY twenty five, which is actually kicking off here right now as we speak. Essentially, based on the latest numbers, the closeout of the books effective June thirtieth that Robert Mackay and his staff in the finance department completed, the audit's been reviewed and accepted by the state, so great work by him and his team. Ultimately, what that has given us is the unassigned fund balance is really the number that we're trying to get to with this particular spreadsheet that he provides. At the bottom in the box, you'll see, you know, our policy currently states that we have a targeted fund balance of thirty percent for the general fund with a minimum of twenty percent. So the way we've reported this to you in recent years gives you a breakdown of the unassigned fund balance we have, and that last column that says available amount, that is the amount of available funds that could potentially be spent right now without violating either your operational target or all the way down to the minimum. So essentially, right now, we have approximately four million dollars above the thirty percent target that you have already set that could be allocated or utilized to fund different initiatives. Not saying to take that to the, then go spend it all in one place just yet, because we do have some recommendations for you. This is a graph of the same similar dollars, basically showing the different categories from the previous slide. You'll notice that the unassigned thirty percent target is approximately just south of thirteen million dollars for our current budget in the general fund. As I mentioned, we're already into the fiscal year twenty five budget development. Right now, staff has been developing their initial requests, looking at things like additional staffing, capital projects, any additional changes to fees and charges that they may be proposing. So over the next month, we'll be opening up the initial public hearing, as we, you're only required to do one public hearing with the annual budget process, but we've historically done two, one at the beginning of the process to see if the public has any input in terms of things they would like to be considered as priorities as we develop the FY twenty five budget, and then one at the end, once we have a recommended budget for you all to consider. So the initial public hearing for the FY twenty five budget will be at the first meeting in February. Following that, we will also be releasing the annual budget survey that we put out so that we're gaining, gathering that information from the public a few different ways, and then moving forward, we'll be discussing within, you know, internally developing that budget and then discussing that with you, priorities both at the retreat as well as as we move through the budget calendar. But very soon, we'll be putting out the request for additional feedback from the public, both via the survey and the public hearing. So the mid-year budget snapshot, just on the general fund, as you recall, last year's budget, there was appropriation of approximately five point nine million dollars of fund balance. Did one, you know, that's highlighted on the slide here, just to make sure that we know, what I showed you earlier, that showed approximately four million above the thirty percent target. That assumes that this money is already spent. That'll be finally, the final determination will be that at the end of the year when we close out the books and Robert determines if our revenue assumptions require the use of those, that fund balance or not. But essentially, that number is outside of that four million dollars plus for the fund balance appropriate, or available fund balance. For water and sewer fund, similar table, you'll see the budget, amended budget, those some of the changes that we've brought in for you, and then at the end of it, the budget variance, right now, we're looking at approximately a one point two million dollar variance. But again, there's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of fund balance appropriation that we will be reviewing revenues as we get closer to the end of the year to verify whether it's needed. Last one is electric fund, similar table, right now, that fund is looking like it will be balanced by the end of the year, tracking revenues as we currently have them. Couple of the adjustments that were factored into those, we made a decision regarding compensation with merit, COLA, and 401K. Again, those decisions that were already made were done within currently, currently approved balance, excuse me, currently approved budget. We did make an additional commitment for the fire apparatus. That bill does not come due for about two years at this point, but we did make that commitment. We received an ARPA stormwater assessment grant, so we had to acknowledge that in the amended budget for the additional revenue. We converted the two part-time FTEs, the one in HR and the one in admin to full-time, and we also added a school resource officer for Johnson Charter Academy. Some of the things that we'd like you to consider in terms of the operational budget considerations, future property acquisitions, we discussed the need for a couple of different properties related to fire slash police stations as well as parkland, so more to come on those as we identify specific properties to be able to match up with those available funds. We still have the public safety complex and other facilities that we have to develop financing strategy for, so while we have some fund balance right now, we may want to hold off in terms of making any specific recommendations to spend those dollars until we've fully developed the long-term financial plan on how to, how to get those facilities constructed. We also have our rolling stock acquisitions, mainly our vehicle replacement plan. If you recall, our budget this year anticipated utilizing debt service to pay for those purchases. Right now, Lee and his team at the fleet and public works and fleet are working to develop a plan for any vehicles that can be purchased between now and June thirtieth so that we can go ahead and make the recommendation on either utilizing fund balance instead of debt service, or if debt service makes the most sense financially for the long term. And then any additional staffing, we're still reviewing our organizational study as well as some additional changes that we're looking at in a few different departments, so more to come on those, but likely that will be more of an FY twenty five consideration. So a few final thoughts, the town still continues to maintain a very healthy reserve fund. I will note that we did receive word last week, hopefully that you saw the press releases, that both Moody's and S and P affirmed our previous ratings, which was AA one for Moody's and AA plus for S and P, that is one notch below AAA rated. Couple of the things that will impact that, our median incomes are still much lower than our other AAA rated communities as well as our home values, but also, one of the other elements that they mentioned was the overall fund balance, our target is currently thirty percent. Some of the other communities that are at AAA are sitting more in the forty percent range, so again, we have things that we've got to get done, so we may, we have to make that balance of whether or not we need to utilize those dollars and to put projects on the ground, or if it's a better strategy to hold on to those dollars to try to get to AAA for future bond or other debt service lettings. But really good, you know, win for the town that we're still at that, that one notch below, and we'll continue to look at the different metrics that we can improve over time to try to get to AAA. We have capital projects program, including the capital plan, that still remains a success. We've got to get some additional horsepower for engineering and fill some open positions so that we can keep these projects moving forward, but right now, we are able to continue to deliver on the approved projects and make progress. Sales tax revenue still remains stable, they're about five percent higher than prior year. If you recall, last year and the year before, sales tax was really the big highlight of the show because it was escalating much faster and much higher than we originally estimated. We were a little more conservative this year, but it does still seem to be trending a bit higher, but we're not expecting a large windfall by any means in terms of the overall revenue available. Mid-year budget adjustments still reflect us, you know, we're still a vibrant, growing community, we still have a lot of opportunities and a lot of challenges out there that we're trying to meet, but overall, we still have a very strong fiscal outlook for the town, and we are focusing on ongoing recruitment of quality and professional staff to make sure that we can keep delivering the great services that we do for the community. Excuse me, with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? We're good.
All right, one other thing, while I'm up here, I did want to note, you should all have, hopefully, a copy, hard copy at your place of our mid-year report. First and foremost, I want to thank all the staff that really, that worked on this, particularly those in our administration, our communications departments, Dolores, Nathaniel and his team, Darcy, Michelle, they spent a lot of time getting this information. I want to thank the department heads and the different staff on their departments for providing us the updates that they provided in here, but a lot of good information, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're being as transparent with the updates as we can and really highlighting the great work that the staff are doing for you, for you and for the town on a daily basis. There's a few fun facts in here, too, that you may not know about each department, just to kind of get you a little more acclimated with some of the things that they're working towards, but ultimately, if you get a chance to take a look at this and have any questions, again, great work by, by all those involved, we really appreciate the efforts, but just again, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes here, and there's a lot of great folks getting the work done for us, and we want to give an opportunity to highlight some of those efforts, so. With that, I will turn it over to, or any questions, any additional questions? Sorry. All right, with that, I believe Patrick's going to be up next.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Want to give you an update on road renaming, so we've discussed this at work session, there's been some conversations in media and other things about some of our routes here through town, and wanted to give you an update as to our plans as staff moving forward with this. So as you may recall, the town, or I'm sorry, NCDOT, as part of getting US seventy renamed Interstate forty-two, that kind of triggered a whole cascading number of effects in terms of needing to remove the business from, the business designation from seventy, renaming Interstate forty-two, and then there was the issue of needing to essentially de-conflict issues with having an Interstate forty-two intersecting with a state Route forty-two. So I've got a few different graphics here. So this is the first one, so this is the US seventy relocation, so currently US seventy goes from I forty and Gardner all the way down to, at least as it relates to Clayton, down to the seventy business interchange there. The plan with this would be that this would, that whole stretch of seventy there would be renamed Interstate forty-two from the forty, I forty-two, I'm sorry, from the forty, future I, I forty interchange would become Interstate forty-two there. That would then create a renaming of Business seventy back to US seventy. As I mentioned, they would As I mentioned, they would, to get rid of NC 42, to de-conflict that, they would name a segment there, NC 36, that would start at Business 70 near the Sheets and Guy C. Lee. It would run down Ranch Road to Interstate 42, along Interstate 42. When it intersects with current NC 40 would run down, I have a map to show this, and then would run that all the way to the county line, and then eliminate basically the segment from the current US 70 interchange there near the hospital, back into town, that would no longer be NC 42. And this is a graphic of that, so you can see segments A, B, C, and D would be NC 36, some of those are NC 42 now, some of those are unnamed portions, and that portion running through the majority of Clayton would no longer be NC 42.
Where does 36 come from?
They had to find a number that they didn't have already. I don't think there's any rhyme or reason. I know when Interstate 42 was initially designated by the federal government, they asked, maybe begged and pleaded not to have it be Interstate 42 to avoid this, and that was the only number that the feds were willing to provide. So Interstate 42, if we want an interstate, it was Interstate 42, so that's why we're going through this. So as a result of that, there's been several public meetings by NC DOT, there's one here in Clayton last year, Cleveland in the fall, had a couple of work sessions to discuss different options on this, and Johnston County held a public hearing on the NC 42 portions, and their first meeting of 2024. There's also been a few stories, at least one story in the John Stonian about it. But the solution really is here, that's been discussed before, would be to rename these routes. So if the local government, local government, be it the town or the county, renames the route, the state and the feds can rename, renumber the shields, if you will, anything they want to in the future, and it will always rename whatever the local government names it. So the suggestion here, and what we have moved forward, what we're proposing to move forward with, it's been discussed in a letter that was sent to the county, and based on their hearing would be to rename what's currently Business 70 to Clayton Boulevard. It would require one address change there, so that would go from the Wake County line to the current 70, Business 70 interchange, so really that whole stretch that goes through current town limits and our ETJ, that would be Clayton Boulevard. The stretch from current Business 70, so Lombard Street hits Business 70, as you come on the other side of that, that would start Veterans Parkway, that would extend all the way to the Wake-Johnston County line just beyond NC 50. So a name change is coming for all of these businesses and residents. Again, this would allow us to rename this once, be able to do it once. Again, if the state comes through and wants to rename things, put different shields and things on it, we can avoid any sort of other impacts to business owners and property owners that they're already going to have because of the changes that are going to happen by just putting a name on this once. And for all, so it's kind of what I'm getting to here. So the name change, it's going to happen regardless, opportunity to give a name, don't have to change it in the future, opportunity Veterans Parkway, you know, honor thousands of veterans here in the county and in Clayton. It's also a great community branding opportunity, several other of our communities around here do not use the route number like we do for Business 70, they have Knightdale Boulevard, Cary Parkway, on and on and on, so a great way to kind of create a sense of place there. And is also, the main driving factor in all of this is to make sure that we don't have public safety or emergency response issues by having multiple 42s, multiple 70s, gives it a clear, easier way to be able to communicate those locations if there's accidents or wrecks or some sort of emergency situation. So our goal going forward would be to have a public hearing, the town here, February 5th, to highlight both of these issues on current Business 70 and NC 42. The county, again, already had a public hearing on NC 42, they would follow us on the Business 70 portion and have one likely at their second meeting in February, get all the paperwork submitted that we need to, to NC DOT for acceptance, and then as they roll out the I-42 and start doing all their changes with I-42 and NC 46, we would concurrently be working on resigning and renaming everything within the town. Did my best to take a somewhat confusing complex issue and condense it into five to seven minutes. I know everyone's a little tired, but with that, if you have any questions or comments or direction.
I've got a question. So in the naming of these entities, Veterans Parkway and what's the other one?
Clayton Boulevard.
Clayton Boulevard. So is that, is, are one or both of these things Clayton's decision, or are we working collaboratively with the county for both of these decisions?
We have worked and had discussions with the county on both of these. Clayton, I think they kind of, I would say, through the discussions, kind of gave Clayton Business 70, since that really goes through the heart of Clayton, and kind of gave some preference there. I think since NC 42 stretches a whole length through the county, I think probably more deference was given to some of their preference on a name, but that's.
I think flags for heroes being on that road, Veterans Parkway is a good connection to that event that's happened for so many years, I do like that.
Was also included on the letter from the town manager to the county manager was the opportunity that participate in maybe putting, you know, yellow ribbons on the signs as we re-sign everything, seen other communities do that as a way to kind of further make a statement there.
I like that, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, we'll see you on February 5th. All right, I now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, I think Chief Tar had one other update he wanted to do.
Oh, man. Under other staff, Fourth of July event discussion, I'll give the floor to the police chief, because I know he can be brief.
Yes, sir, I can, and I will. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to kind of update you on the plan for this year's Fourth of July. As you know, two or three years ago, we did not do fireworks, and we went through a period of time, and we, as a town, established a square-to-square event to replace the absence of fireworks. Last year, we brought fireworks back at the launch site, Clayton High School, but we continue to have the square-to-square event, which we did in May of last year, and then did the fireworks show in July. In our after-action meeting, after the Fourth of July event, firework event last year, it was a consensus among everybody to combine these two events into one day rather than two separate days. So the plan is this year, which July the Fourth falls on a Thursday, we will do the square-to-square event, which will start that afternoon around 5:00 PM, and run it right up to when we launch the fireworks, which the, after the fireworks are launched, the event will conclude. We will still block off Main Street, kind of do it similarly to what we've done in the past, that'd be vendors, food trucks, games, inflatables. The one thing that we are changing this year versus last year is that no spectators will be allowed to view fireworks from Clayton High School's campus. As some of you know, this past year, we fought the weather most of the night, we had a number of people in and out of there, which I did not deem to be safe, and I was not the only one. So this year, we're shutting down the high school, it's just a long sight, we'll have, a lot of this is still being worked out, but we'll hopefully have sites around town where people will be able to view the fireworks and not be actually on campus. And as soon as the fireworks are over, we will reopen all the roads and try to get traffic back going, so that's the plan. Anybody's got any questions or comment? I'll be glad to try to answer them, except a lot of this stuff is still in the planning stages.
So I think everybody was very excited about our partnership with Clayton High School, and, you know, I don't, I'm not really clear on why that's not the best location.
The, I'm sorry.
So I'm not really clear on why Clayton High School is not the best location.
Or viewing?
Or fireworks.
No, the fireworks will still be at Clayton High School, what I'm saying is, we won't allow people to view it from Clayton High School. The fireworks will still be launched there.
Okay, so you can't go to the high school and pull out a chair and watch fireworks?
Not inside the gates.
Inside like the football field, or?
The high school has gate all the way around the outside of it.
Yeah.
And those gates will be locked, except for the firework vendor actually launching fireworks.
I'm with you, okay.
We will probably block off Robertson Street and Fayetteville Street to allow people to get closer to view it, but again, that's still in the planning stages, but last year we allowed people inside the actual gates, which were very close to where the fireworks were being launched, and this year we've decided not to do that for safety purpose.
The proximity to the fireworks is the reason to not have it on the school grounds?
Not to have people on the school.
People, not the fireworks, I get what you're saying.
Fireworks will.
I get that, I mean, but people on the grounds of the high school, viewers, the reason to do that, it was the proximity to the actual fireworks.
Correct.
Okay. But you're going to close Robertson and probably Fayetteville, so people gather there.
I think we will have to close Robertson and Fayetteville in order to allow people to get as close to it as we can.
Okay.
I trust your judgment, a hundred percent, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Rich, will it be okay if I open a public comment?
It's your meeting, sir.
Yeah. So at this time, I'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment.
Only comment I'll make is relative to the council, there are times up there that you're going to have to do what's best for the town of Clayton, grit your teeth and vote, and you can't pay a whole lot of attention to the people out here that are protesting, the people out here tonight, none of them, hardly, maybe a few of them lived in the town of Clayton, vote, none of them pay taxes. You need to keep that revenue coming, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to council for comments.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, staff, I know that, I've seen some, I guess, tree cutting companies and such around town, making some cutting and I guess clearing some land, and I actually had a citizen reach out to me, just, I guess, concerned with the safety of it, and I don't know if we have any protocols or if there's any type of markings or so that we need to do. Now, I don't want to be burdensome to, I've seen a homeowner or so that, but I saw a couple unsafe situations with one particular incident that a resident pointed out to me, and I drove over there and saw it, so I didn't know if there's any ideas or suggestions on something that could be done.
Just to clarify, you're talking about private companies working on private properties, but on the roads or adjacent to the roads?
Yeah, like there wasn't any road markings or cautions, it was just basically they were cutting trees down, and they were using the road as part of that without having any type of cones or anything else being set out to, I guess, warn people that that was happening.
Yeah, we can certainly, we'll definitely take a look and see what, in our current ordinances, may need to be updated if anything, but particularly if somebody's working adjacent to the right-of-way, if any impacts there are required to follow proper traffic control, and particularly if they're felling trees into the right-of-way, we need to know about that in advance, so if anybody does see that, please report that to the town, and particularly if it is an immediate safety concern, I guess, call 911 would be the initial one if they're going to be potential impacts to roadways or safety concerns there. But we'll definitely take that back and see if there's anything we can do to firm up our standards and requirements for any of that work. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter.
So moved.
And a real estate property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Sorry, is there any other business that needs to come before this board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good night.